Just making sure everyone online you can hear us. We are recording and live.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks everyone for your patience. We had some technical issues and had to move the room. And thanks to our IT support, Scott Holand, he's got us up and running. This is the meeting of the Newington Conservation Commission for July 15th, 2025. Calling the meeting to order, would the recording secretary please take the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Bashan?
Here.
Commissioner Conway?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Here.
Commissioner Pasiewicz? Commissioner Sadeau?
Here.
Commissioner Womet?
Here.
Chairman Zelen?
Here. For the absent Commissioner Paskowitz, I'm going to seat Commissioner Ostrowski to sit in for him this evening. Moving on to our next item is acceptance of minutes, approval of the minutes from the June 17th, 2025 meeting. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes that you'd like to make? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes, Mr. President.
Motion made by Commissioner Womet, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Anderson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Chairman, I will abstain, I missed the last meeting, so I abstain.
Okay, one abstention from Commissioner Sadeau.
And I need that as well because I also was not here last month.
Okay, two abstention, second subvention from Commissioner Conway. We still have a majority and the motion passes. Move on to public hearing, we have none. Next item is public participation on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Any member of the public wishing to speak, they come forward. Seeing none in the room, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
Just the town.
Public?
Wifi did you use? That's free. I think it's.
So there are no attendees online other than the Russell.
Okay, seeing none online, we'll move to the next item which is new business. This is application IW-25-11 to extend parking lot approximately 180 feet. And add a retaining wall at the southern portion of the existing parking lot into the historical pad site at 2929 Berlin Turnpike in the PD Plan Development Zone. Applicant BSC Group Incorporated, contact Frank Vaca, owner, Berlin Turnpike 2029 LLC. If the applicant is present, would they come forward, state your name for the record and give us your presentation?
Absolutely. Can you all hear me this evening?
Just want to point out, owner is Joe Suo who is president, who is present, and Mr. Vaca is his engineer of record.
Okay, and also for the record, we have in the room Paul Dixon, our town planner. He's assisting with the operations. Can I share?
Yep, you can share.
Very good.
All right, can everyone see for this evening? Excellent.
For the record.
Commissioners online, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Francis Vaca, I am a professional engineer at the BSC Group in Glassbury, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of Dorro Restaurant Group and State Point Properties. We are here this evening to discuss Casodoro Newington, the parking lot extension project. This has been a long time coming, thank you very much for your patience on this. We had a number of items to work through and I'm very pleased to be here to present this to you this evening. Tonight, we are here to respectfully request Conservation Commission approval under Section 10 of the latest Newington Inlet Wetland Regulations for the installation of a parking lot extension south from current restaurant and parking area. It is my understanding based on conversations with Mr. Dixon, Mr. Zibideo, that there was a bit miscommunication with regard to this submission, so I don't believe we are eligible to, for the commission to act on it this evening, but I would like to present my presentation for you and get some feedback and take this back to, we'll be back here on August 19th to formally present this, well, to again formally respect the approval for this. Tonight, I'm going to go through a quick explanation of the existing site. I'll go over the erosion and sedimentation control, the parking lot design, and then there is a proposed employee access stair that I'd like to discuss with regard to getting access for employees associated with the development. Can you all see my cursor? Yeah, okay. So I'm sure the majority of the commission is familiar with the site. It was the former Bertucci's located at the intersection of Berlin Turnpike and Main Street. We came in front of the wetland commission probably in the end of December of '23 to secure site plan approval for Casodoro, one of Dorro Restaurant Group's flagship restaurants to come into Newington. There was a modification to, and it's not visible on this view, but there was a modification on that site plan application to install a new patio in the front. Actually, I realized that we've not come in front of the Conservation Commission because we were located outside the upland review boundary for that. This evening, the pad site that was mentioned earlier, there's this greener area to the south right here that was a former historic parking lot and a former pad site. I call it a pad site, it was identified as a potential pad site, but it had not been built out as a formalized pad site. And that's going to be part of the discussion for the area this evening.
Can I just ask for clarification on what a pad site is for those of us that aren't familiar with that?
Sure, absolutely. So a pad site essentially is, unlike a larger box store like a Price Chopper or something like that, a pad site is a smaller sized site that would be utilized more for a smaller pad like a Walgreens or a McDonald's or something like that. So it's a smaller sized site that has access to, direct access to like a main thoroughfare. For another example, for example, in this view right here, I believe there is a portion of the Price Chopper property that as with the additional landscaping, I believe this is actually could be technically listed as a pad site. It could become potentially in the future some type of smaller pad, Dunkin' Donuts type of pad facility type of that. On the smaller commercial side, it would not be for residential, it's not for multifamily or anything like that. So it's more of a smaller commercial pad type of size site.
Think like Panera over on the Walmart property.
So this is, the view has twisted slightly, so north is now facing to the right. The Casodoro building is now on the right-hand side of the view. This is the existing parking area, the existing parking area to the north of the building, Main Street and Berlin Turnpikes now. On the bottom of the page, the pad site I'm referencing that I had indicated is essentially this area in this location on the south portion of the site. There is a historic access to this area and again, we have, there's history of the area of, with some of the previous owners of the site to know that this used to be a historic Shell gas station and Morton's and Dairy actually used to be located here in the, in the mid 70s. The lot size, 3.56 acres. The current building on site is 6,900 square feet. And in total, as part of the requirements that we met with back in the 2023 site plan approval, we did receive approval for 109 parking spaces, which does satisfy the zoning regulation for parking for a restaurant of this size in the town. The restaurant, I don't recall exactly when it opened, but they had a very successful start. They served over 10,000 meals in the first week and there were times when reservations have been booked two weeks out on Fridays and Saturday evenings. And there are also times when they have 50 employees on, on the peak season during Friday nights and Saturday evenings. As a result of that, the popularity of this generated a parking problem and the existing lot was substantially underparked even though we confirmed and we made sure that we satisfied the requirements of zoning regulation. So what ended up happening is patrons of the restaurant ended up parking in these areas of red here identified as the fire lanes for the site. So there were portions, essentially the front portion, this main aisle right here was actually was parked with three double stat cars. So they ended up getting as many as nine to 12 cars in this area as well as parking along the, the fire aisles and then along portions of the fire access to the building here. And then there were also portions where they were basically driving onto the random unpaved portion of the pad site as identified in green right here through the historic curb cut. And then they were also parking in certain portions of the grass along the frontage of the parking areas. They were also at its peak season, they were, when all of this was ultimately full, it was, patrons were, ended up having to go down to park in the Price Chopper lot and then walk up around Lewis Street to get to the restaurant. And the main reason behind that is the restaurant is generating more individual trips than anticipated. In other words, for example, I think bar seats 35 plus or minus. So when, you know, in the evening or so, when you have people that are attending the bar, more often than not, individuals are driving themselves separately to the restaurant to utilize the restaurant facilities versus carpooling. And this is, this was underlined during Mother's Day because they had record attendance on Mother's Day, but they did not have parking problem because the majority of all of the families came in one vehicle. So that's, that is what we are anticipating to be the issue with regard to the amount of, the number of trips to the restaurant. As a result, to alleviate the, the issue and the hazard associated with them parking in the fire lanes, the owner at the time made the decision to pad, to add some additional gravel to the former pad site, which was a historic lot at one time in the past as a way to essentially park only the employees. Because if there are situations where 50 employees are parking on the site, they need, they wanted to kind of convert that area to employee parking and then utilize all 109 spaces for the, for the patrons of the restaurant. We do recognize that the upland review boundary is there and there was some disturbance inside the upland review. We recognize that there was a letter submitted to the commission essentially apologizing for that miscommunication and path that was not followed appropriately. And as a result, we are here this evening to essentially present what we would like to see as far as the proposed parking to satisfy these, these issues. This is going to be the erosion and sedimentation control plan, but before I get into that, I want to further highlight typically with the Conservation Commission. There, there's a requirement for Newington where we show both the town upland review boundary and then a delineated boundary that was secured from a soil scientist. So this green line represented here is the town identified upland review buffer, which is 100 feet from the town identified wetland area here identified here in blue. And then we are almost exactly lined up with the field delineated upland review buffer in this case, which is identified here in green. So if you overlay both of them together, you can see that there's a minor area on the left-hand side. This would be on the south where the delineation is slightly off, but in this case, they're, they're almost exactly lined up. As far as erosion and sedimentation control for what is proposed, this area identified here in red, we are proposing, instead of silt fence, we are proposing what is, we are calling, well, it's, it is a wood chip filter tubing. So basically, it's base, it's wood chips that are encapsulated into almost like a permeable sock. And the point behind this in this photo here actually accurately represents what is anticipated is it is a much more substantial perimeter control to prevent any disturbance to the adjacent wetland because of our close proximity and due to the elevations associated with that. The other benefit of the tubing is that it does not require embedment into the soil unlike silt fence. So instead of having to cause additional disturbance, or basically this gets laid down, it's about 12 inches in diameter and staked in place and it provides a more substantial separation from any of the wetland areas. As far, wrong way, I'm sorry. As far as the remainder of the site, we will be following standardized inlet protection and we have a standard construction entrance identified to access the construction site. Which brings us to what we are proposing. So this is the proposed development for the parking area. Just for clarification purposes, that is the exist, the upland review area. So the amount of upland review disturbance is inside this boundary identified here. But I would like to reiterate and clarify that we are not proposing any disturbance inside any of the, to any wetlands specifically. There is no wetland filling proposed. We'll be working close to it, but we are not anticipating any disturbance as part of this project.
Is there an existing apron or is that planned?
Say that one more time.
Apron there, is that existing or is that planned?
This one right here, this is a planned apron, the, the one, the new one identified. Yet that has been, it's been reviewed with DOT. Obviously, there would be a, we would have to, encroachment permit for all of that, but it has been reviewed with them and they are amenable to an additional access, right turn, right in, right out from the site. This also could be potentially used if at any point in the future there were to be any modifications or changes required. This could still be essentially utilized as a pad site and it could transition to some type of pad type of commercial space at some point in the future, but that is not, that is not on the table right now.
Dead one, one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have pictures of how it looks now? Because I understand that there's been quite a bit of work done there already or is it just cleared or gravel, is it gravel? What is it?
Currently.
Pictures you showed us was when it was still tree.
Yeah, the picture we showed us when we were still tree, yes, we do know that there was disturbance to the area. We, I don't have any direct photos of the area now. I can, I can obtain some for the commission.
I'm saying what percentage of it is cleared now?
What percentage?
Entire area that you're proposing?
Not the entire area, no, exactly. If I were to, in fact, let me grab my pen here. Essentially what is cleared is they did not, they did not go beyond any of the, well, I would call the top of slope areas. So any of the clearing would essentially be within the top of slope area. So we did not go, actually, this probably stretches a bit farther. So that essentially would be the portion of the site that would have been, like I said, it was formally cleared, but this would have been filled with gravel to allow for the employee parking in this area.
And outside of that, those are proposed parking spots, that's what those lines are?
Yes, outside of that, these are proposed parking spots, yes. And I, I will get to the, let me undo this. Hold on one second. All right.
There's quite a bit of filling in that corner.
There will be quite a bit of fill and there is a wall associated with that. I'll, I'll speak about that momentarily. So as far as the proposed parking lot extension, again, we are extending this about 180 feet. We will reconstruct, we reconstruct the south portion of the existing lot. So the existing lot is identified, it's hard to view, but basically this is the original lot right here. We are essentially replacing in-kind parking associated with that side of, the south side of the lot. So we're going to replace those 40 spaces. We will be adding additional 114 spaces throughout the remainder of this area. So we have the standard aisles, parking bays as identified. So we have two separate parking bay runs and then we have perimeter parking. And then identified along the edge of this area is a retaining wall to allow, to accommodate the additional parking. The spaces are currently proposed as the, there's a provision in the zoning regulations for Newington where per that section 611C, we can do a three-foot overhang to allow for a 16-foot space. So we have seven-foot islands in the center with a 16-foot space to overhang for the vehicles and this allows us to satisfy the requirements for the 10% interior landscaping requirement. We are actually parked at 12% interior landscaping with this. The yellow here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's a quick question, I'm a little confused. But on this plan right here, can you, once, once again, show what's parking there already and what will be the new expanded parking lot? I'm a little confused, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No worries. For the record, that was Commissioner Sadeau.
Sure, not a problem. So I will identify this. So the existing parking here identified in red. So essentially, this is the existing parking lot border right here. It comes down, round, and then comes over. So this, this D-island and this D-island are not changing. The edge of this island, the edge of this island are also not changing. So these eight spaces in all three of these areas are all the same. There are seven spaces here, this is getting converted to six to allow for a transition to allow relocation of the site sign. The additional, I'll switch to a different color here. So the additional parking added on to this will be stretching around this edge, down, around, and then over incorporating the new curb cut onto the, new curb cut onto the Berlin Turnpike and some additional spaces identified in here. So we are adding in total 114 spaces to total a parking of 216 spaces for the total site.
Correct. My question I want to get to is that in that green area, has that been cleared already?
A portion of this.
Ravved over, so to speak.
The, the portion that has already been cleared at this point would have been essentially the, the top of slope area, which is identified approximately in this location right here. The, this would all have been essentially low brush and, and I will identify that there was a historic parking area here at one time. This was cleared of the lower brush area out to approximately the edge of that blue line.
So more clearing will be a cap on this permit. Would you done, we have a little bit more on the perimeter still left to clear?
That is correct. There will be some additional clearing as part of this and that will be offset by the landscaping that is going to be proposed.
And I heard historically this was a Shell station?
Yes.
At one time?
Yep.
Okay, so the blue area is basically the Shell station?
Yes, the blue area is basically the Shell station. We have information and I don't have the information in front of me on this meeting, but for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we have historical documentation from a, a member of the community who, his family previously owned the site. And he has historical photos, documentation and his own anecdotal record of the property, which essentially identified almost the entire area as paved at one point.
Okay, so I would like to understand, how did the area become vegetated over time? Was that intentional as part of the approval of a prior application? You know, to leave some green space or was that just purely part of the site that was neglected?
What ended up happening, the history behind that was at the time when all of the interstates were being constructed, the state government eminent domained the property for the purposes of the installation of I-291. They had owned it for, I don't know the exactly the timeframe associated with that. They owned it for a certain amount of years, nothing moved forward on the I-291 interchange interstate. And it was ultimately put back up for sale. At the time that it was, I don't know the exact timeframe for the sale purchases at that point. When it was put up for sale, it was purchased. Unfortunately, the original family was not aware of it. They would have purchased it back if they had the ability. However, it was purchased and then was held for a certain amount of time until 1992 when the Bertucci's site plan moved, came forward and they had presented the Bertucci's site plan. So technically speaking, the site had never been abandoned and had been essentially, when it was eminent domained, it was left on hold for the potential for them to move forward with the interstate, but it never moved forward. So it basically, it was on hiatus for a number of years. When it was sold, it was, in '92, they constructed the restaurant and then as part of the site plan for the restaurant, they had a potential pad site identified in this area, but they never moved forward with it and it was essentially, it wasn't, I can't say it was abandoned because it was just, it was just never developed at the time.
Okay, so I just wanted to get a clarification that the vegetation there, it was not intended to be a preserved green or open space. It was always intended to be used as part of a development?
That is correct. That is our understanding. There was, there was never, it was never conveyed or formally given as a green space or open space at any time.
I have a question for Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, since that was a former gas station, has there been any soil testings on possible contaminants in this area that's going to be disturbed during the building of the parking lot, possibly getting into the wetlands?
So before I bought the property, the state of Connecticut, when people had bought it, got all kinds of environmental reports from the state of Connecticut, which we can dig out and file when we purchased the property. But the state, we moved all the tanks and remated editing that was there.
I mean, I think that should be something that comes with the application just because I would be a little concerned with that.
The yellow identified here, to, to address some of Commissioner Sadeau's comments, the, the yellow identified here is a new retaining wall. It is going to be a proprietary design as in the formalized design of that will be presented as part of a, a turnkey system that will be as part of the construction documents. The highest point of this is on the south corner identified, you can't see my cursor, identified here. And it's a 14-foot high wall. In this case, it's set, it is set off the property line by five feet to allow for adequate construction and erosion control. And the intent behind this again is to maximize the amount of parking space to accommodate the restaurant and the, the demand for the parking for this area. There are various different options for wall designs, but we have not proposed any of those at this point. It is intended again to, there will be guardrail to obviously prevent any, you know, vehicular access or driving off of the edge of the wall. But it is intended again to, to essentially lift the, the, the site to allow for the, the parking access.
So you're in effect extending the top of slope?
That is correct. Yes.
So question, currently water flow from top of slope? Imagine that's southbound?
Yes.
Running southbound off the, the property today with that retaining wall and now a level surface for parking, how does the water flow to hydrate the wetlands?
Yep, so that's my next slide. So the proposed parking lot will be pitching in the direction of, we have two water quality treatment areas and in here in blue, they are, where they're called focal, the proprietary system that I, I like the most and what I usually use is called a focal point system instead of the standard catch basin drainage piping structure. What actually happens instead is there's a pre-treatment structure. So all of the water on the site essentially runs over land to these retention area or these water quality units. So the water flows into this structure and then into a bioretention treatment area. So this is a bioretention garden, which the plantings are specifically designed. So this is a bioretention garden, which the plantings are specifically designed to absorb a lot of the pollutants and so on that would come off, you know, the nitrogens and the phosphorus that comes off of a uh, a vehicle. They are treated by the plants and then the media itself, the brown material you see is actually just standard mulch. And beneath the mulch is a proprietary media that is essentially, it's a self-healing media that utilizes the uh pollutants to basically continues to maintain itself essentially. So as the pollutants get trapped in the media, as they filter down into the detention area, they're collected by this and then continuously treated and eliminated from the soil system and from the uh parking area uh through the use of this uh bioretention area. From there, it basically filters down through that into the, their area identified here in purple is the, it's an underground detention system. So the site originally did have uh off-page right, there is a detention basin uh that currently treats the majority of the site. But anything associated with new impervious area will flow to this detention area and be collected and uh stored to ensure that we do not increase any of the peak discharge. From here, it exits through an outlet control structure over to this blue identified here, which is a zero velocity outlet. So zero velocity outlet essentially is, imagine it's a catch basin that works in backwards. So basically as the pipe fills up full of water, it will surcharge. But as it surcharges, it basically gets to the top of the grate of catch basin and then slowly leaks out through a riprap area and then will continue to feed the, the wetland system. So essentially the design of our hydraulic system makes it essentially as if this parking lot area does not exist. We are not increasing any of the peak discharges from the two through one hundred year storm. And we're continuing to feed that well and so that we're not starving that over, over time. So it's, it's, the design of the system essentially makes it that this parking lot theoretically doesn't exist from a hydraulic standpoint.
Up to how many inch rainstorm?
It will, the, the detention will store up to an hundred year storm. So essentially when it releases, it will release the flows uh over time, over a twelve to twenty-four hour period to uh, and it releases in such a way so that the peak discharge is exactly the same as what is currently happening there now.
When, when the water is discharged, which way does it flow in that drainage dish? Does it go?
North.
North?
Well, west first.
It's gonna go west and then north?
This.
So towards that condominium complex.
This part of the um wetlands here is essentially a swale that drains the marshy area on the other side of the Berlin Turnpike and carries it out across uh, I think that's Lewis Street to a wetland system that's behind our transfer station. Uh, where that ultimately flows up past Clonlumere and through the other part of the two ninety-one corridor and joins the various systems go into Millbrook.
Yeah, do, do we have any uh concerns about flooding in that area during?
I have not yet had to complain about flooding in this area. I have plenty of flooding in town, but not here. Uh, so I think it has a lot to do with the marshy, that area has, has the ability to retain an awful lot of water. Uh, so I think what ends up happening is that part of town, when it flows into that marsh, that marsh then fills and meters out through here and then, and I, uh, I'm not sure if it was intentional or if it's just by uh coincidence, um outlets at a metered rate like we would do if we were designing it. Uh, these parking lots have not flooded to my knowledge.
And so any concern with this design adding more water to the stormwater system in town?
Um, no, because it's uh, it's actually, I think, going to improve somewhat on it. And that anything that ends up in that purple area, as Frank mentioned, is going to be controlled on an outlet within a twenty-four to forty-eight hour period. We have discussed this to some extent. Um, that by itself is basically what I try to do when I design towns, uh drainage improvements. We try to stretch out the length of time, a, a higher water, water flow would go into a brook, which um, it's, it's along the lines of if you can keep it from getting to the point where the brook will overtop by delaying how much water goes into it. Uh, a project we expect to do relatively soon would be on Connecticut Avenue where we have a um, I'm gonna call it a misfunctioning detention system, uh it's more of a, of a surge pool. They didn't put an outlet control structure on it, so the water flows in and out through the same pipe, doesn't really work well. Uh, so sometime this fall when physical services, I shouldn't call that, that was my last town, uh, when highways um has the ability to put a little time together, we're gonna put an output control structure on that and expand that detention basin a little bit. And it's um, essentially does the same thing as what Frank is talking about here. We take that storm flow off Connecticut Avenue where it causes that area to flood. We put it in the, in a pool off to the side of the road and let it out over a period of time.
Okay, um, the, the reason for my question was in the wetlands inspection report, page one of two under non-title, one of the comments said, "The narrow bordering wetlands to the water course experiences intermittent flooding heavily influenced by stormwater discharges." So that kind of caught my eye, I just wanted to make sure that there's no increase and no danger to anyone downstream. Um, would you classify or categorize your design as low-impact development, L A D?
Yes, so the, the, if I go back one slide here, so this is, this is one of the main uh proponents to low-impact development. Because we have essentially uh, we have separated the area out into two separate areas. A lot of the main low-impact development design is where you, instead of the traditional look is, well, we have one detention area. We have one drainage piping system with a number of catch basins that are all interconnected and they all get into one spot and then they're metered and then they get released. Uh, in this case, just due to the sizing of the site, it still made sense to do one single detention area. However, we are splitting up the above-ground portions of this so that we have essentially a, uh, one portion of this is a uh area that would be uh contained in this particular tributary watershed. And then we have a separate area identified here that would be contained to this tributary watershed. And they are individually treated by both of these individual systems. The systems are not large, they don't need to be, they essentially, the, the main components that would be treating it is your two-year storm. Anything larger than your two-year storm, this area is going to fill up and overtop into this uh beehive grate right here. And so basically the water gets right down into the detention system because you have already effectively treated all of the, the greater than ninety percent of the contaminants that you would have picked up and collected through the uh, the parking area that have been essentially dropped by the vehicles. And as far as the maintenance is concerned, essentially all that needs to be done is the main largest particles associated with the majority of the contaminants either are collected in this pre-treatment unit, which is essentially just a small structure that's only about eight, eighteen inches deep. And a standard landscaper can basically remove the grate, shovel it out and put the grate back in. You don't need a back truck like you would have need for like a sump catch basin and so on. And then as far as any of the additional sediment that would discharge from this into the main portion of the uh, the main portion of the rain garden, the remaining eighty to ninety percent of the contaminants on the sediment are collected in that first three inches of standard mulch. And basically the only maintenance that's required is every year you would replace just the mulch, which is a standard practice for most developments from a landscaping standpoint. They're always, you know, every year they're adding the mulch as part of their landscaping. And that's essentially the only maintenance that would be required for a system such as this.
Question.
Sure.
Commissioner Rashad. Um, with all this filling, are we taking away flood storage? Because it's a very steep uh topo lines there, does the water ever come up into that area?
We, I, I did not verify uh whether this was one hundred year flood, I do not believe there is any. It would have been identified on the, the site survey. And um, if anything, it would essentially be in the wetland area to the, on the, in this case, it would be to the southeast of this development. On the opposite side where the large billboard is, that would essentially be the area that would be flooding.
I just mean the storage of that immediate channel, the, the, the surface body of water that's flowing through there.
No, it would not, this, this design, because we're, we are essentially, I'm not going to count all of that, but the edge of our wall essentially is going to be at a minimum, probably seven to eight feet above the edge of the channel. And on, let me go to a different view here in one second. So over on this side here, so essentially, this is the Price Chopper parking lot. We have elevation right around one ten or so, the Price Chopper parking lot is one thirteen. You know, our elevation of the edge of our wall here is probably around one, actually the bottom of the wall is one twenty right there. So Price Chopper is.
With all that filling, are we taking away flood storage?
No, because, because, no, no, we are not, because it's, it's, it is going, if it's gonna, yeah, if it's gonna flood, it's gonna flood, it has to fill up essentially six feet of the Price Chopper parking lot before it even reaches our site.
I'm not worried about your site, I'm, I'm worried about what's below that.
No, I agree, I understand. What I'm, what I'm saying is even if we didn't do anything, the site would have, you would have to fill six to eight feet of the Price Chopper lot before you even reach the edge of our wall. So in other words.
Price Chopper's so much lower.
I understand that, that's what I'm concerned about, are we taking away any flood storage down there? Down in the channel itself?
No, we would not be, not with, not with this, not with this development.
Reducing a lot of that, of that slope there, so.
Not, not with, the, the, the comparison is, you know, we are reducing the, the, we are adding to the slope, however, the.
That's still up higher than the parking.
It is much higher than the parking, exactly.
But I think you should point out, you know, the, the, the tremendous size of the impervious area of that Price Chopper Plaza's parking lot. I mean, it is huge compared to what you're proposing here. That all drains into that same channel, I'm assuming.
Uh, I don't know exactly where the discharge points of that is, I would imagine it would be in that.
Oh, flowing north as like your waters.
So essentially, and the reason, in order to satisfy designs such as this, to ensure that we are not creating any additional issue by designing, by ensuring that these designs that get submitted to the town, in any town, that we do not increase any of the peaks for any of the storms. It's basically guaranteeing that whatever is currently existing now, this design is not making that worse. If anything, it's making it better. Ideally, what we try to do is we try to reduce the peak to the best of our ability, it's not a requirement. But a lot of the times with the detention that we propose, we ultimately reduce the overall impact of the site to make it treat, make it function even better than it ideally would.
Except after the hundred-year event and all bets are off.
After the hundred-year event, basically what would happen at that point is it begins to release.
Like it does now, like it would anyway, right?
But well, it begins to release as if it was the zero storm. Because it's like we've contained everything, so once you get to the one hundred-year storm, then it starts to release as if it's just started raining. And it doesn't like, release all of the water all at once, so. So when everybody else is flooding out, we are just starting to release essentially, is how that would work.
And that column at that discharge point, you said it's a reverse catch basin, I get that. But that must have metering holes to drain that out, so that doesn't stay full all the time, correct?
No, but what will happen is the, the design of this, the, the detention system itself is essentially a milk crate style detention. So basically it's a bunch of, it looks like milk crates that are stacked on top of each other and they're all pervious. So the boundaries of this are intended to also be pervious. So anything that would be contained within the detention area over time will ultimately infiltrate into the ground. So anything that is stored within that pipe, when it stops raining, will essentially run back into the um, because this, I believe this is, well, it's on, the pipe itself is a three point two percent. But it will run back into the uh detention system and infiltrate into the ground. And anything that is remaining in that small structure, yes, there will be probably one or two ports at the bottom that don't.
So because I would be worried about freezing.
Right, right.
Because that's all above ground.
Yes, it is, it will, it's above frost, exactly.
How, how high will it be, almost as high as the parking lot?
It, no, it's gonna be down, the, right now it's down probably six to eight feet below that. In fact, mod, I might modify the design, actually push it even farther down the slope.
But it's still gonna stand off the bottom of that channel, four or five feet or so.
It's, yes, it will be above the channel by four or five feet. And then basically the structure sits right at level and then you put stone around it. So when the water fills up, it's, it leaches through that and then leaches down. But it leaches at a zero percent velocity, it's not gonna cause any erosional issues. That's the, the intent behind it.
Yeah, I'm not worried, I was worried about the freezing, but.
Right.
We'll have some drain ports.
Right, I understand.
I wouldn't trust, well, couldn't go back with that much, all drain out with the pitch of that.
It will, anything that surcharges will back to, to wherever the, wherever the pitch transition stays. And then it will, it will weave out, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
No problem. As, and then the, the, the final component of uh tonight is the uh proposed employee access stair, yes.
We move on to that, could we just go back to the parking lot really quick? Um, whenever I see a parking lot, I do have a concern with the amount of asphalt and creating a heat island.
Yes.
Um, so are you taking any measures to mitigate the effects of the additional heat? Or are you adding any trees to the area, any types of plantings?
There will be plantings in all of the islands. We have, right now, we have tentatively placed the plantings in the center of the island to allow for some additional snow storage. Um, I will, I do have to double check to ensure that we have the correct number of trees to satisfy the requirements of the, the regulation. Uh, as far as, we have not specifically looked at any particular heat island effect um specifics for this, however, there are some various options we can look at. There are, you know, I, I know, for example, there are uh two particular, I know that there are different asphalt plants that, the, the quality, not the quality, that's the wrong word, the type of aggregate material that is used ends up being on the lighter side. And um, as a result of that, the, when the parking lot is finished, when it's first finished, it's gonna still look like standard pavement. But over about a year, once it gets weathered, the color temperature actually in the, the light, what am I trying to say? The hue of the pavement actually lightens unlike, like the standard highway mix or something like that.
Is that something the applicant would be willing to consider to help mitigate the possibility of the standard?
It's one of the standard places, smart poles anyway, so it's from me, yeah, yeah. So yeah, absolutely, it's, it, it, it's not any additionally expensive, it's basically the, the type of aggregate.
It's using a lighter colored stone and, and sand and.
Exactly, and it would, uh, yeah, it basically, it's, it's, like I said, when it first gets paved, it still looks normal. But then after, you know, after a year or so, it weathers and like, and brightens up a little bit. You get less of the heat island effect as a result of that.
And those overhang areas, are those grass?
Yes, grass or some type of, of planting.
That you're just barely at the ten or twelve percent of.
We're at, we're at twelve percent right now, yes. Yeah, with, with this design, with the parking that we're identifying, it's, it's twelve percent.
Doesn't look it, to be honest, would you, but I'll take your word for it.
Yep, it is, it is the, and, and I remember correctly, it is the, it is only the, it is only the parking that is within the parking boundary. In other, you cannot count parking, correct me if I'm wrong on that one, Paul. But yeah, I believe you can only count the stuff that is on the inside portion of the uh parking area, so. We achieve that because these D islands are actually, they're wider, they're probably, I believe they're fourteen feet wide. In fact, I believe actually we match whatever is currently existing right there on, on the site. And then finally, and the reason why we're here for conservation for, for this particular request is we do ultimately have to cross the, the stream channel here. But um, so because the current owner, or as you say, the, the operator of the restaurant has negotiated with the Price Chopper Plaza for fifty parking spaces and they don't have any intention of, of relieving that at this point, they are proposing, well, currently what's happening is the employees are parking in Price Chopper and they have to walk over onto Lewis Street up and around to the restaurant. Uh, they've already created a desire line. Uh, and then unfortunately, what we had heard is that recently, um, I believe an employee was struck by a vehicle. So what they are requesting is for an access, basically it's an employee access stair. Now, it's going to be designed fo- fully to code because we're calling it employee access stair, but it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be made obvious, but it's not also going to, it, it, the public could essentially use it. It's not intended for the public to use, but it will be designed, it's not gonna be like a ship's ladder or something like that. So it's posed in this location, I would. So it's posed in this location, I would like to identify that this, uh, those random trapezoid you see is actually, we did supplemental survey of this area. So that we had accurate locations of the stream channel. And because our, our A two survey basically carried it just beyond the edge of our property boundary. This survey carried it beyond so that we could essentially get to where the, uh, edge of the parking lot in this case would be. We do recognize that this, this proposed stair is majority on the adjacent property. The owner is aware of that, and that would all have to be negotiated easement wise with the, the current landowner there.
What, will it be constructed from steel or wood?
Uh, wood is what we are proposing at this point. So we have the, 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 this upper portion here, there's a small concrete sidewalk that essentially connects, there is a lower level. So essentially, the majority of the deliveries for the restaurant actually come in the, uh, basement level here. So this, in order to minimize the height of the stair. We are connecting to that lower level entrance. There's a small, uh, seat wall that we are penetrating. And then this will be a concrete sidewalk to a, essentially a boardwalk. Boardwalk and step design that is essentially wood construction. This layout is satisfies code requirements from an exterior stair, but it is not, I am not considering this to be a, a formalized. This is exactly what is getting built from a, you know, showing the railings and all of that. Essentially, this will be, uh, this would be bid to be constructed by a, a, uh. Carpentry contractor that would essentially provide this in addition to any additional requirements from like an engineering standpoint. For like crossing the stream and so on.
Approximately, where's the property line there?
Oh, the property line would be, give me one second.
That, but the crossing itself is well on to the other property.
The property itself is well on to the property, the property line is actually identified right here, so it would be this first set of sonnets. Yep.
You said this is for, for employee parking, but I thought the new parking lot was for employee parking.
The, what, what the, the temporary lot that was constructed was originally for temporary employee parking. Is turned out that ended up, everybody started parking there anyway. So by negotiating this with the adjacent landowner, they wanted something safe. Nor, so employees are strictly parking in Price Chopper for now. And it is my understanding that, that is, that is still going to be maintained. This is essentially like the safety, safety in order to allow that to, to continue. The additional parking that is proposed is based on the amount of, uh, use that the, the development has been receiving. To ensure that we are not going to have any of these safety issues, uh, in, in the future with regard to parking inside any of the aisle, of aisles or any of that type of stuff. So that's what, that's what this is being requested for. And one of the main things I'd like to point out is we have placed the, what we're calling the raised boardwalk crossing. This is, uh, at least ten feet or so, I, I'm sorry, it's approximately six feet. Over the existing, uh, drainage channel in this area to ensure that there is, we are not going to potentially constrain anything. From a scour or, um, stream channel crossing standard requirement. So we've, we've placed it that high intentionally so that we are not going to encounter any situation where the boardwalk itself is going to be underwater.
And are those sonotubes being placed in wetland soils?
Uh, we are not putting the sonotube, it, none of the sonotubes currently right now are identified inside either the delineated wetland. Which is this line, green, or within any of the physically identified drainage channel. So we've spaced them, if they have to go even farther than that, if it needs to be a sixteen foot, uh, we can do that. And the thought behind the installation for those, again, we're utilizing the, um, the erosion wood chip berms. Basically placed to ensure that the construction, now I, I'm, I can't speak to ways and means of this. But especially for this lowest point at the very bottom of the slope, there is possibility that this one potentially could. I believe, I would imagine these would be precast structures, and they would basically be, be set. But this, this one in particular, I could see could, could be installed by hand. Not, you're not gonna carry it down there by hand, but you would basically excavate by hand. The rest of them are far enough away with enough, uh, controls that you can get them in with either an auger or with a, a small mini. But it would be, though, that area that would be directly adjacent to that stream channel crossing. Uh, could potentially be constructed, uh, to ensure that the least amount of impact, uh, possible. And then that wood chip berm can be essentially a, a, uh, either jute matting with the wood chips inside. Or it could be some type of U V, uh, UV deteriorating material. Uh, so that essentially they would get installed, but then they would remain in place and they would not need to be disturbed and basically get. Basically disintegrate and stay there over time to ensure that any of that disturbance does not make its way into the channel.
Um, any clearing of vegetation, uh, required to put in that boardwalk?
So the thought, there would be probably a minor amount of clearing. We, I placed it, some of the survey that I had was, I know that there's a, there's a willow tree in the general vicinity there. We did not clear any of the major trees for this. It would be, there's actually, if you stand, and I apologize, I don't have a photo, but there's, there's actually a clear corridor. If you stand at the back, that you could actually see down where there, where there is not large vegetation. And that's kind of what I aimed for in this layout. Uh, there would be some small shrub clearing, but again, the reason why we have it spaced with such height limitations here. It would need to be, uh, pruned and so on, but there is no, um. The, the least amount of clearing would be required in order to get this installed.
Do you have a, uh, an inventory of the vegetation or trees that would need to be removed?
I do not have an inventory of, of that at this point. Again, like I said, we were aiming, we were aiming, I'm sorry.
Couldn't get that?
We can, I, we do have an, uh, an arborist on staff at BSC. I could probably have an inventory of what, in, what particularly, if there's anything worth, uh, any type of, uh. Yes, we could, we could get something like that, yes.
Uh, and then follow up, that by tuminous sidewalk, uh, are there any alternative materials that could be used? To make it, uh, you know, less impactful? Again, you know, I'm looking at hard surfaces and.
We could definitely investigate something, uh, either stone dust or something like that. I can see what would be, what would be feasible, that would, that would hold up over time, yes, we can, we can look at something.
I said one question, is, is the channel there, is that just a natural swell, like it's no manmade, uh, channelization?
I believe it is a natural swell, it's, it's not, I would, and this is my personal opinion, I'm not a soil scientist or, but. Not in good condition as far as I'm concerned. It's, it's now the understanding that I have based on my conversations with the, who's the previous owner and the family previous owned it. That's been there for, you know, ever. Um, unfortunately now, because of the parking lot and so on, it's, it has collected refuse and, and so on. And it's, it's buried behind, there is a, there would have to be, it's not identified on the plan, but well, actually you can see it. There is a, currently a guardrail there. So as a result of that, because the guardrail is there and there's vegetation of the guardrail, it's kind of like a forgotten area that is just, it's collected. Just, just the stuff that's blown off the parking lot for years and years, unfortunately.
I'm glad to see that they're utilizing that space over there, um, there must be some legal issues about, you know, we can't approve something if the applicant, uh. You know, that, that property owner has to approve.
Yeah, we'll get some kind of easement.
Yeah, right, you have it now or you're gonna get it?
No, we'll get it.
We may need to have a letter from them, uh, as a co-op at this point.
That's what I was thinking.
Better to bring it up now than to wait until later. Uh, just request them to sign a letter of permission for you to represent them in this, uh, application. So there's no conflict with that later. It, it's as if anybody else, yeah, okay.
I apologize for the length of that, but, uh, thank you very much this evening. I, again, I understand you guys can't act on this tonight, but again, I would be more than willing, if there are any questions or any recommendations or anything. Uh, I'd be more than willing to try to address those at this point.
Okay, I'll open it up to commissioners, any other questions, follow ups?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Good, Commissioner Sidel?
Yes, um, I'll start with the, with the staircase. It's not fine, like you said, but that slope is heavily, heavily vegetated, right? How are you even gonna get equipment in there to auger? I don't know how deep these, these reptangles are here, how deep down into the soil. But that is a heavily, heavily vegetated slope, very steep. Soil will be removed from that upland review area. That's gonna be a major scar onto the, you're removing that soil out of there. That's a concern to me, you have to do quite a bit of clearing. I don't know how, how wide this, this, the staircase is, but that's gonna be a technical challenge, number one, from a structural standpoint. Is that slope stable enough to withstand the weight of these stairs? Um, number one, number two, how do you even get equipment in there to even drill down and put these pillars in there? Uh, I, I get it with the, the wetland, you, you're spanning the, the lift, the length of the width of the, uh, the, of the, uh, channel there. But, um, I question the stability of that slope to handle the weight. Of that, of that type of, because Parcher is on the budding property. I find that hard to believe, if I own that, I would take the liability of somebody even falling when it's slippery. When it's freezing, somebody takes, you know, I, I would, me personally, this looks like coverage too far to me. I think not only for the liability, but for me getting in there with equipment, there's gonna be a lot of clear cutting in the upland review area and removal of soil. I mean, that's a fact, you disagree with me?
No, I don't, I, I, what I'm, I, I cannot, I cannot project how the contractor would, uh, install this. I don't know if it would not be more reasonable for them to actually hand construct this. In other words, when I say hand constructed is, um, and again, there's, this is intended to be a, a, an example of what could potentially be constructed. If they were to say, we will, rather than using the full sonotube piers, we are gonna propose piers that are basically hand dug. And then, uh, wood structure is utilized on top of the pier itself directly above grade. So ensure that we're not gonna have any, you know, rotten wood or anything like that. It's one of those that it may be more cost effective to actually hand construct something like this. Uh, based on the steepness of the slope. I will clear, just for the record, the, the, this existing ground surface, this physically is the ground surface. It was, it was surveyed and then ran through our program to show the actual steepness in that area. So this is an accurate to, an accurate to life representation of the slope. So as a result of that, like I said, it, it's, it would ultimately be the contractor's ways and means for this. But it may be most cost effective for them to approach something like this by hand.
Either way, I'd say that's a challenge, that's, that's gonna be a challenge, hand or machine or whatever. That is, I consider that line more like a sketch. But, uh, it's basically walking off a cliff from the up above from your parking lot, which I have another question. If you could switch to the other view, where you show the parking lot, that extension, that extension goes way into the steepness of that slope. Right in that upper area there, in the upper left there, upper left hand corner there, yeah. Those are the slope lines, and how are you gonna level that out to carry the weight of the vehicles and everything? You're gonna have, I assume the fourteen foot wall is gonna go all the way horizontally there, right? I assume that's gonna be fourteen feet, but that's, that's gonna, I just worry from a structure standpoint. How you're gonna pull that off? Because I thought what you've cleared now would be the extent, but what you've told me, you're gonna go even further in. That's, you know, I don't know, I, I, I'm not a structures engineer or a landscaper. But that, that's, you're already encroaching on the steepness in the upland review area. That would be more of an engineering concern, but again, you're taking soil out of the upland review area and disturbing that area.
As, as far as the installation of the wall in this case, uh, essentially what would ultimately have to, have to be done is, let me grab my. So in these situations, you know, if you're, if you're, if you have a modular block retaining, this is looking at it in section. If you're modular block retaining wall, essentially it does need to be constructed in layers. So essentially, you would, you, there would be excavation down to essentially the base layer of the, uh, wall in this case. And then it would be constructed, and then it gets essentially constructed in steps. And then as far as a structural support for this, a modular block wall of this type that would have that type of a surcharge with vehicles on top. Essentially, it would be basically tied back with, uh, geotextile. And I'm, it would basically be a biaxial geo grid, which is basically, it's a, it is something that would essentially support the, support the face of the wall. From basically falling forward by pulling it back and basically ties it back and it ties it back into the slope. So this is essentially built, it would have to get built in layers. So essentially, because this slope semi gradually dips down, we would.
That's semi gradually, it is, look at those, you know, I've, I've, I've seen many of these prints, that, the, those dotted lines are the slope. And those slope lines are pretty tight to me.
And you basically start at, and this would get pulled back and pulled back, and it would be, get pulled back in layers. And then you would install the wall in layers. And basically, as you install the wall, it continues to go farther out. We've, we've, we've done.
Talking about, I'm talking about the foundation, you're talking about height? I'm talking about confound, foundation and its impact on the upland review area.
Well, because the, the foundation of the wall itself is, for a modular block retaining wall, there's not a substantial foundation for it. Basically, it goes down one to two levels below that. The soil itself essentially is what holds all of it up. As this, as you dig down in this case, you would dig only that area that you would need to be able to begin the installation of the wall. And that will be essentially up slope area of, essentially, it's not gonna be on the downhill side of this. I, I, we, we, I've seen it a few times in the past, there are some projects that BSC has worked on in the past, we're working on one now, actually. In, in, uh, Homes Elementary School in, uh, New Britain. That I've, there are sections of wall that are getting installed specifically for slopes of this magnitude. And there are ways and means, construction methods that are, that have been developed to allow essentially this to get installed. And prevent any disturbance from the, this, this, that side of the, the, the wall construction, it's, it's.
But this is all dry laid then? The whole wall is dry laid, there's no concrete footing?
No, that's, well, we haven't formalized what the type of wall material would be at this point. But right now, it is being proposed as a, as a modular block wall, yeah, so dry laid, exactly. It's not, it's not a concrete precast wall at this point. Usually those become cost prohibitive, especially of this size. This would either be a ready rock, uh, which is the larger blocks, or, uh, like a versalock, one of the smaller.
We did have one of those that collapsed at PC Richards, if anyone ever noticed that, that tall wall over there. But I'm sure your, your engineering is gonna be better than that. And those horizontals, uh, you know, um, those horizontal, uh, members that go back into the earth, we used to call them dead men. I know that's kind of a non-technical term, but.
Right, the, the, well, they've, they've transitioned out of the dead men, which is essentially the larger concrete like tiebacks. They just use the, the, uh, again, the back, so you, you know, best way to describe a back seal geo grid is essentially, imagine a construction fence. Like the orange construction fence, the layout on its side. But it's designed so that instead of it just being flat, it's got ridges in it. And those ridges are substantial enough, yeah, they're substantial enough. And the engineering that goes into it goes back far enough that the, it's, it's all based on friction and weight.
The weight is holding.
It just doesn't, yeah, it, it, it's designed and they have case studies and it's, it, it doesn't pull itself out. I don't, I can't speak on behalf of, of the, the PC Richard wall, I don't know how that was constructed, but.
How tall?
This would how.
Eighteen, I worked on that. Yeah, eighteen or twenty feet, it looks pretty tall.
It was an installation failure. The contractor had been told repeatedly his material was no good. And that it would not allow the water coming from the condo above where they stored the snow to drain. And he basically told the company it's working for it, it'll mind its own business. And then it collapsed and then it became our business again. So, yeah, that was, that was a contractor failure, it wasn't a designer failure.
Um, is there any wiggle room in the number of parking spaces that you need? So that, um, the, the size of the, uh, parking area could be reduced to, you know, uh. Get away from that steep slope and more towards the existing top of slope. To kind of address those concerns about the retaining wall. We can. Obviously, we take it back to to.
Well, see, the problem is, we don't know how long we got the parking spaces from Price Chopper. They may come back and two year, they're only giving us twelve months at a time. So if they redevelop, you know, we we can put the stairs in and they could say a year later. You can't use it anymore.
I'm just looking for those.
So then if we do that, then we have, you know, we need forty fifty spaces on a busy night for the employees.
And and just looking for the the prudent and feasible alternatives.
It's more important for us to have a lot to even have the stairs, let's put it that way.
So Joe, a question for you that's not Conservation Commission related is. I I think you're getting into Oster territory as a major trip generator.
I'll speak to you about. That's what I have to talk to you about.
Yeah, and that application will cost you six months. Just want to bring it up so you're aware of it.
What is that for us tomorrow?
And when you exceed.
Highway traffic.
You know, certain number of parking spaces. And I believe the magic number is two hundred.
It is. It is two hundred.
Two hundred more parking spaces, you have to get an Oster permit.
What is Oster?
Office of State Traffic. Traffic Authority. So that's the part of DOT that regulates a large parking area. And I'm not sure you want to go that route, but that's a decision you and Frank will have to work out.
An empty.
Two hundred total or two hundred additional?
Two hundred total.
It's two. It's two hundred or one hundred thousand square feet in your facility. So basically, what it is, is you have to verify with the offices of the State Traffic Administration that. You are not causing essentially too many trips at a certain time. And if you do, it has to be, there's an analysis that goes into ensuring that that does not affect the the local traffic. Is essentially what that is. And for some reason, the trigger is two hundred spaces or.
They're saying the more spaces you have, that's going to encourage more people to park there. That's what you mean by trips?
Yeah, trip generation, so it's.
Spaces generates trips. The the ITE documentation is more about the point of attraction, which in this case is the restaurant. If the restaurant was less popular, we wouldn't even be here.
I'm saying they're using that parking space number, so.
Right. Right.
So how many do you have? Are you going to have total with this plan?
Total with this plan is two hundred and sixteen proposed.
And it's 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 not a a matter for this commission, but yes, it's coming up. As I look at this, unfortunately, I didn't look at your plans prior to the meeting. I didn't have the time. I was away last week. So it's it's just something that popped into my head as we were discussing this, that that is something you should evaluate as far as your needs. Just because they don't they don't do anything in a hurry. Six months would be a hurry.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
And and. And that two hundred number would apply to their site and not include the Price Chopper site?
Include Price Chopper.
Price Chopper would already have its own, so.
They would have.
They already have one. Exactly.
You developed the whole thing and just left sixteen spaces unmarked. Until you got your permit. I don't know if they would allow that, but.
I don't see Doug hundred district one falling for that, but that's. That's that's another matter. But yeah, it's an interesting thought.
But yeah, could could you just, could you just?
Not even pave a part of that.
Move the curve and put law, you know, put grass there till you get it.
I I think what you could do is maintain it in its current condition to serve the restaurant until Oster issues the certificate. And again, it's not pertinent to this commission. It's not. It's not a wetlands matter. It's it's going to be a matter when you get before TPZ. They may actually require you to have it in hand before they can approve your permit. So it's.
Maybe something that'll influence the size of the parking area to.
Well, I guess it's kind of where I'm going. If you want to avoid the issue entirely.
But it's also, I have a bank that's interested in this, like a sixteen hundred square foot bank. If I plop it on the property.
That would eat up sixteen spaces.
And the bank is closed at four in the afternoon. So the parking, you know, you have all the parking. You still lose spaces.
And the bank footprint would eat up the sixteen spaces and you would stay under the two hundred threshold.
Put that whole row off the north side there. That's sixteen spaces right there. That's about sixteen or seventeen, I just counted. And again, this is you.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we're just, you know. It's a moving target every day. Something else comes along.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Commissioner Sadel.
Go ahead.
Um, just to going back to that foundation question. Maybe some detail in the back of the print package, maybe just describe some of the things you were talking about. Would that be possible to add a sketch to show that specific typical cross section would look like?
Absolutely. I apologize if it wasn't in there, I would.
Lot of stuff, but I'm more interested, you know, site specific. Can you go to your rain garden again? I we showed your rain garden there. You had a picture. Yeah.
Be clear.
Okay, that's fine. So first question, you're on a plateau and you're trying to get down to that drainage channel. What exactly is taking out that energy?
The what's they so so this, I apologize, I don't have a better view of this, but this this structure, because we're looking straight down on it. This structure basically is, instead of using a paved leak off, which is used to be the standard for something like this. So basically, you you would have a pavement leak off, this runs down and then your water hits that leak off and then dumps right into the to the rain garden. The reason why I am a proponent of these structures is. A lot of the times what happens with that paved leak off is you pave that leak off and that becomes that. You are focusing all of that velocity right there to that one point of your rain garden. So that's where all of your washout occurs. It undermines the pavement. The pavement starts to get damaged. So what this structure does is it's essentially just a small ring. It's about eighteen inches diameter and this grate, the the placement of this grate is actually very specific. It's placed basically perpendicular to the flow of the water. So as the water basically enters this and that velocity hits the grate and the grate and it pushes it straight down onto, basically, it's eighteen inches deep and it's a concrete pad. So basically, the water hits that, hits the concrete pad and all of your velocity is dissipated. This grate is sized to accommodate basically any of the refuse or anything that would be collected in the pavement. Basically, collect is collected all in one spot. And then inside this structure, there's a there's a screen. And the screen basically captures about eighty percent of any of your, you know, major contaminated sediments, basically in one location.
So quick, just so my question is, not all that water is not going through the rain garden here on the right? Was it that deep down?
It it does, because what happens is this turns right and what happens is this water comes in, enters here and then gets. Once it enters that, it goes directly into there's that that grate basically screens it right into here. So you've taken all your velocity out, but all that water gets into the rain garden. So all this is doing is collecting that first flush. And then all the water gets pushed into this area. And then it begins to filter down through the proprietary media.
So it's percolating, it goes into the rain garden, percolates, right?
Yes.
Now, and then you mentioned this detention basin. Is it go is that a way underneath the ground? How deep does that go? And you're still at a pretty high height at that point. You still got a ways to go down to get to zero velocity where the channel is. If I'm saying, I always thought you filled it up and then it comes up and then it comes out. You sort of. So it's a tank and gets to a certain height, then it comes out.
Because this, because this. The system functions differently than like the standard detention area. So if I can, if you can bear with me as I draw a small picture, I'm sorry, as I draw a small picture on this side. So basically, if you were looking at this in in cross section. So you have your pavement and then you have your 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 pretreatment structure. The flow exits your pretreatment structure into your rain garden area right here. And then this portion of the media is about eighteen inches deep. So this is all of your proprietary media. The water basically percolates down through this. This media is one hundred inches per hour. It's it's the majority of it is essentially free draining stone. But then there's a very minor amount of organics mixed in and that organic is what basically is what is treating the pollutants. And then this is set on top of a filtration fabric and then the tank sits beneath it. And the tank can be oversized, but basically the treatment itself enters here on your your two year storm, flows in here. Works down through the media and then drops directly into the tank and the tank will slowly fill up. Because the size is substantially larger. So you're creating your water quality treatment in the the focal point area itself. And then the water, once it gets through, is basically just sitting in the tank until it gets released through the outlet control structure.
Now that, when it exits there, it fills up, gets to a certain height, then it goes out to that structure on the on the left there, right? Well, in the left hand corner. And at that point, that's at the level of the channel at that point. You've gone that deep already into the ground.
Exactly. So what? So this this dial the control structure is basically, imagine it's it's a manhole. But in the middle of the manhole, there's a great big giant, basically plate. And inside the plate is a very small hole, that orifice. So what happens is, as the water fills up, the water fills up above the elevation of that hole. But it's it's still keeps leaking out the hole, but it leaks out the hole at the rate at which the existing site discharges. So basically, right now, it rains and you get, I'm making up these numbers, you get twenty cubic feet per second that exits the site during a five year storm. The design of this structure, using the software that we use, basically allows us to mimic that exact design.
Flow rate, that flow rate.
Right. So as it comes out of here, it exits at the same as if there's nothing actually taking place on site. It's just releasing now. So it leaks through here, through that pipe to the low velocity outlet. And then it just ended. The whole point of this is just to prevent, we're not causing any, it's not just a free discharge and you're going to just wash out every single time it rains. So that's the intent behind this this structure, the way that's designed.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Just going through my list of questions here, property line, the wall. There's no planting plan. I didn't see the planting plan on the on the sketches on the blueprint package plan, so that's going to come later. What is the retention plan right now? That's there right now, before you expanded the parking lot. What is the sedimentation erosion intervention right now?
For the site currently, currently, the design of the site. Hold on one second. All right, currently, a design of the site right now is there's currently. I apologize. So there's. The current drainage system, standard drainage, we have double catchment on one side, double catchment to a pipe system. This discharges to basically, this is an open galley system. So it's it's basically a it's a concrete vault that's about four feet in diameter, four feet, well, it's it's rectangular, four feet wide by four feet high and it's got open louvers in it. So basically, the water that fills up into this basically pipe portion here will slowly infiltrate into the ground. Anything that overtops the current baffle connects into this standard site system. And this runs around this path here and then will connect, there's a there's a catch basin. I'm sorry, there's a detention basin right here. So this attention basin has a standard outlet structure. So as this in a five to ten to whatever year storm event, this basin will slowly fill up and then it will overtop the structure and discharge down into the wetland swale identified here. So we are essentially, you know, this whole system goes in here. This design reduces the flow so that it's like it doesn't exist, discharges here into the stream. Our design, again, as I just explained, it will convey the flow over this way. I spoke briefly.
Whole system, we we shut down, dug out or capped or?
No, it it will. It will. It will stay in place.
Be there.
Our our design basically handles all of the new flow associated with anything that is is currently being proposed. So we are addressing any of the new pavement or new impervious coverage that we are putting on. The existing site will still, the the grading and the existing site will still maintain its current existence and it will continue to function as it currently does.
So just to clarify, basically, it's two separate systems that'll coexist.
Yes.
What is there right now in the upper, my final question over in the in the upper left hand in that cleared area? Is there any grading right now? What happens? We have a big storm right now over on the on the left hand side. I understand what you just did on the right, but in the area that is cleared, is there sufficient protection until we move forward?
Yep, right now, I I keep turning that off. I'm sorry. Give me one second. Right now, to limit any discharges associated with the. Temporary lot that was put in is there are there are erosion controls that have been placed along this area. And then there is also a, there is also a gravel berm that is installed to prevent a structural measure to prevent any additional material. So basically, any water that would hit this is slowed down by the berm and then is ultimately captured by the cell fence that was installed for the purposes of the the temporary lot that was installed right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, then. Like to entertain a motion regarding public hearing. Any of the commissioners feel public hearing is warranted for this application? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion that a public hearing is not needed for application IW twenty five eleven?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lemet. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed abstentions. Okay, motion that a public hearing is not needed passes unanimously. I'll then entertain a motion to table this application until the next regular meeting.
I think we should table this up. I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Motion from Commissioner Lemet. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Bashat. So the motion is to table this application this evening until the next regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion table passes unanimously. We'll meet again in August. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Everybody need a break? I know it's getting near nine o'clock. Okay, nobody's responding. We'll move on to the next item, which is old business. Application IW twenty five dash six, provide paving, grading, utility and storm drainage improvements for the bus parking lot at two hundred Garfield. FKA two oh six Garfield Street. Within the upland review area in the R twelve zone applicant town of Newington, contact Chris Zabidio, owner, town of Newington, town hall and police department. Where did Paul go? Trolls for us.
Here he is. You okay?
Yep.
Want to take a seat of honor?
I was just going to stay here, but I can move over there if you'd like, because I need you for the camera.
Either way, yep, I have it on the applicants right now. While we're transferring whether we said it at the beginning of the meeting or not, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add for the record that, yes, we are in the Helen Nelson Room. We did post signs on all the doors and leading to here, but there has been no one in that room who has showed up or in town hall yet.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Thank you for the update. For the record, Chris Video, town engineer. Picking up where we left off last month.
Do you want to maximize the presentation?
Can we all see it okay?
Yeah, as I said, you can hit the, um, the percent button in the bottom right.
Did you get that? Oh, you like that better?
Yes.
Alright, so picking up where we left off last month, I'm gonna skip part of the project overview because we went through this last time. Uh, if anybody has questions about the history of this, we can go back to this. But what I want to get to is the stuff that was the big item of contention last month. So having had the opportunity to read the minutes from two thousand eighteen. We had our IT people, we now have a GIS technician and she is very capable when it comes to putting together images. Uh, that I would have struggled with. So what we're showing here in this particular slide. Is, and of course my menu bar is in front of my text. How do I move that? There we go. Is my audio on? Can our online people hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear it on my phone.
Okay. So the upper part of this slide shows the, uh, bus parking area from two thousand seventeen just prior to. Uh, the construction for the remediation. And it shows the, the building and a few of the buses there. Uh, and it states in that text in the upper corner there that the approximate parking area, including the old garage. Was seventy-three thousand seven hundred sixty-five square feet. The image to the bottom of this slide is the current, uh, image taken in September twenty twenty-four. And that area is approximately one hundred thousand five hundred and forty-three square feet. This is an increase, uh, between pre and post development of the remediation. Of approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet or point six acre. So I think John had asked for this to be quantified. So this next slide. This shows that same aerial from two thousand seventeen, give or take. With the old limit of the parking is the blue dashed line. And the green line is the proposed pavement limit. And the brown dashed line is the current use. And what this represents at the end of the project would be a reduction of that expansion. By almost eleven thousand square feet, ten thousand nine hundred and eighteen square feet or approximately a quarter acre. Of the existing, uh, parking area being returned to upland review area. And in the process of that, we get to maintain the, the bus parking operations in a manner that I, I. In my discussions with board of people is more safe than we currently use it now. Um, one of the comments that came up last month had to do with the width of the aisle between the two parking rows. And I believe I have that slide here. Um, i- is this visible enough to everybody? So you can see how the parking layout is with this. And there is a forty-two foot drive aisle in there and the reason for that drive aisle is that's what it takes to back up a forty-two foot long bus. So the, the intent is for the new rotation of the vehicles coming in off of Garfield. To turn into that aisle and back into the rear row of parking spaces. As opposed to what they do now, which is sometimes stop on Garfield and back into the parking lot. Uh, or turn in and then back up, uh, depending on what other vehicles are in there now. And then the smaller buses will turn into that drive aisle and pull forward up to the, there'll be a painted line. Telling them where they have to stop. Because that's sharing the front of that pavement area with the bike lane and the painted, um. Sidewalk or pedestrian path. So it all stacks up going, in this case, I guess that's west. Now I have one more picture I want to show you. I think it will help a little bit. Uh, this is again that same image showing the, the plan I just had up on the screen. For, to help clarify a little bit of what's, uh, what's being proposed. And I, I hope this can clear up a little of that lingering question about what happened. And how it did expand. Everybody agrees that it did get larger than it was. And what our proposal currently intends to do is to shrink that expansion somewhat, but not entirely. Um, coming back to the, the issue of what the towns' needs are here. Until such time that we find another place to move the parking facility for the buses, this is where they are. And to properly manage this, this fleet of buses and its assets and our, our parking requirements. Uh, I think my plan is the best compromise to pull as much of it out of the upland review area. As we can, as opposed to the conditions we had previously. And in the process, we are also adding a water quality device to the storm drainage system, which we don't have now. So any of the runoff, uh, storm runoff from the parking lot after it's paved. Will be pretreated before it goes into Millbrook. Uh, so in the, uh. Uh, in the long and the shorter things here, I, I don't know what, what else we can really. Go into, uh, as far as what happened. My intention is more to go forward than to really dwell on what happened in the past. I understand that was a bad time. Uh, but I, 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 I don't really have a way of addressing the history here. I don't remember the history being a problem.
We know, we know what happened.
There was a lot of problems. There was a lot of things done wrong in my opinion, and I say this as an outsider because I wasn't here then. Um, but what I'm looking at with this application now is how to improve what we've got. If you're done, I, I, I could reply if the chairman will let.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bashat.
I still have a lot, a ton of problems with this, but the first thing I want to, uh, address is. Um, I'm confused on the application. So we got this map that shows the whole connectivity project. Then on the, on the verbiage, it just says that it's to provide paving and grading utility storm drainage for the bus parking lot. So. I'm confused. Are, are we deciding on this whole project?
Absolutely not. The whole project is not part of your purview. You are restricted to the areas within the upland review area for the bus parking.
So I'm just reading on the application summary, this is part of the overall Garfield Street project. That's just a generalization.
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I still, um, we're still adding. Point three five, if I did my math correctly, because you said we're six over. Uh, point six acres over, we're giving back point, one quarter acre, point two five. So we're still adding point three five over a third of an acre.
We're not adding it, we're, we're using what's already there.
Well, essentially we've added it, you know, we're adding, so.
Eight years ago, sure.
So that's not our decision to make. That's something for the town council and the TPZ to go through that whole eight dash twenty-four thing. But back to that again. And I, I read the minutes and the town planner was telling the, the council that. Uh, the bus parking lot had nothing to do with what their referral for the eight twenty-four. It's in, it's in the minute.
You mean the current eight twenty-four, the one I did last week or two weeks ago?
Yeah.
I specifically spoke to this bus parking lot in that presentation to the town council.
That was the TPZ.
And to the town planning and zoning commission.
There was one line, it says, it mentioned the bus parking lot and then it said, that's why we're here today, but. To the, uh, to the town council, the town, uh, manager. He admitted it as his first time. Um, and I don't want to get too far off on that, on this stuff. Because it's really not even part of our purview, but. It only because this historically going back to my peeve, you know, six years ago that I brought it up. That's what, that's the only reason I'm, I'm revisiting this and, uh. So I, I still see a lot of things wrong. Can you go back to one of those, uh, drawings that you have here? And oh, and also, I was just curious, where did you get the, um, upwind review line? Because. On the two hundred scale wetland maps, it does not look like this.
I can't say exactly where this particular upwind review line came from, except to say that, um. Our GIS tech has access to all of our GIS information. So we're, I'm just presuming that they, uh, use the same thing that is the same as you went to. If you go to our public GIS right now, so I use it every day to check. Uh, applications for planning and zoning and for building permits and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, I, I went to the two hun- are you referring to the two hundred scale wetland map? That's the most detailed one that, that I know. They call it the two hundred scale.
Yeah, it's the overall town weather map, but I can say from.
No, no, that one is cut into like fifty different segments, so. You could really zoom in and, and see. So I, I thought that's the, the vital of the wetlands.
Yep, and I had from, from staff, that. Larger wetland map is added as a GIS layer. So that's how we utilize it as a GIS layer when we're reviewing, um. You know, applications, someone coming for a shed, someone coming in for a pool in their backyard to make sure that they are outside of the town.
So that's what we use.
Yes.
Alright, so it doesn't match up with the line that we're showing here. It's actually considerably different. It's got a.
It should match.
It's got a bulge going the other way instead of inward. So if you bring it up, maybe you could find it, but. I forget what the number of the, uh, grid was, but.
No, I mean, this, this, um.
And also.
This image has that same shape to it, as far as I can see. Uh, it's a fainter line where my cursor is now. Um, and that's, that came off the plan set that I developed for the project. Uh, this, this one doesn't show it, but, uh, let's see. Yeah, here's that same bulge. This is the actual from the plans that our contractor is going to be meeting with me tomorrow to discuss. Um, I, I.
And that one's different than the one we have in front of us, so, I mean.
I beg to differ. I believe it's the same one.
Well, I'm looking at it. This has a, a very distinct bulge out towards the wetland. And the one on the two hundred scale has a distinctive bulge outward from the wetland.
This is your upwind review line.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
What, what were you talking?
I'm talking about this reduction in the area here. This is, this is what I thought you were talking about here.
I'm talking about the actual upwind review line.
Okay.
So it's different on different maps. I'm just curious where we got this one from.
Let me, uh, I also not sure, I mean, do a look at that picture again.
And another thing, and, and maybe this is outside of our purview too, but it's, just can you hold that map right there?
So yeah, that, this is, the brown line is the current parking boundary. It's not the upwind review line. The upwind review line doesn't show on this one.
Yeah, I understand that. So another thing is, is that today, these buses are all parked out here. Outside of the, uh, of the property, they're in the, in the Garfield Street right away, the. I think.
No, that catch basin is actually within the parking lot. I mean.
About a foot.
Um.
But anyway, I took a picture of it and, and there, we have a row of buses that are basically parked in Garfield Street. And if you intend to pull that. Parking lot back, you'll have to continue that same scheme, I imagine, because. You'll never be able to turn a bus around in there with that reduced space that you're talking about. So I think it is all leads up to, this is not. A good plan, in my opinion.
Yeah, we're all entitled to an opinion.
Um, so, so this is one of my concerns here is. This putting the wetlands commission in a compromising position because. If, if we don't agree with this plan, I don't want this to become contentious because.
Considerably different.
I really like our relationship with Chris. I like my relationship with. Paul, um, and all the commissioners and. I don't like being put in this position where we have a plan in front of us that is. Somewhat contentious. So. Is there any way that this could be taken out of our hands and given to another authority like DEEP? And let them take a look at, because they were the ones that, um, helped with this remediation of this site initially. Alright.
You have a contact? Do you know somebody?
Well, so, okay, so let, 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 let me, let me go on with a few other points because, alright. So the eight twenty-four, can, can you guys just? Brief us again why there's an eight twenty-four for this? Or what, what is?
I'll, I'll take it. So the eight twenty-four referral, are you gonna, alright.
Yep. So I'll actually have it up. So an eight twenty-four, I'm gonna.
We argued about this, by the way, and I didn't think it was necessary, but.
So. Eight twenty-four, basically, known municipal agency or legislative body shall locate, accept, abandon. Widen, narrow, or extend any street, bridge, parkway, or other public way. That is why the bridge for the Mill Pond Park did go to an eight twenty-four referral because it's specifically mentioned bridge. Um, shall, and then number two, locate, relocate, substantially improve. Acquire land for, abandon, sell or lease, any, and then it goes on to all municipal properties. So that's the one that we're primarily here, that we went to the twenty-four. Again, outside, it, it's not a wetlands type of question, but it goes to the eight twenty-four referral. Because municipal improvements, many municipalities exempt themselves from their zoning regulations. So Newington does that as well. So when you do these municipal improvements, this is actually under the purview of the planning commission, not the zoning commission. And it's primarily to refer to when you have a town project. And this is typically a large project. So say you wanted to build a brand-new school. Um, okay, yep, so that would be a question that you look at the plan of conservation and development. You look at as much data as you could and say, is this the proper site for this? Well, say someone wants to put that school, I found a great property in a commercial industrial area. That would be TPZ looking at and saying, okay, does this make sense with the plans? No, this area doesn't look appropriate for that type of use and they could recommend against it. Now, they don't get the chance to deny an application. It would then go to, back to the council and the council would have to approve it with a two-thirds majority. So that's how an eight twenty-four referral works. And what we're talking about this one is substantially improve. That is a subjective term substantial, and it's something that a lot of towns and a lot of planners do. Struggle with and look at what is that level of substantial improvement. Many items here amongst themselves, so this is like six items pulled together as one project for efficiency. And to get them done and to work this process through. To get these projects that we've had sitting for, you know, I think the community detective grant has been sitting since two thousand seventeen and eighteen. Um, to accomplish those. So in and of themselves, you know, the restriping of a road to include a bike lane might not be considered a substantial improvement. Repaving an existing town parking lot might not be considered a substantial improvement. So that's something that is a decision of either the agency who's doing that work or the town council to refer it to the planning commission. So an eight twenty referral is basically mainly a check to make sure that. As far as the planning authority, the planning commission for the town. Has the chance to review major municipal improvements, selling property. You know, you could see on the ones, say you had a nice piece of property, the town took the time to acquire everything. That we've had up on the Cedar Mountain on the corner there. Say someone in the town says, I want to sell that property or sell off one of them to a developer. We want to put housing or something on it. That would go to the planning commission that says, okay, now we review this with the chapters of the planning conservation that talk about. Conservation, the areas that are important to the town. This would not comply with the plan and then they would say either a negative referral in that case. Or a positive referral in other case. So this did go to the planning commission, uh, and did get a, uh, positive referral from the council.
So why would the Garfield parking be included in the eight twenty-four? And be exempt from our zoning regulations? Why? So we just heard a parking lot and the timing of this couldn't be any better. We just reviewed this prior application and this. Applicant is, you know. Putting in detention, retention areas, filtration, they're putting in LID, um. You know, uh, they're willing to make this as less impactful as possible and they're, they're following the zoning regulations. Why as our town are we not doing that? And leading by example, especially the, the board of education. I, I would think you would want to educate the public. On low-impact development. Here's a perfect opportunity to do that, but yet we're throwing that all the way. And we're just going to create this huge asphalt, um, heat island. And, and I don't understand why we're doing that and we're just having this water go right into a separator and out into Millbrook. Um, and then from the, the, the prior minutes I read that our stormwater management. Basically, we're in violation of that for six years. Um, we were not compliant with DEEP. Um, and, and now I'm hearing about.
We are now, by the way.
I know we're in compliance now, but it just, it's embarrassing that, you know, I'm reading that our stormwater management was, was not compliant. Um, I, I just feel. Um, I I just feel as though everything about this, it just doesn't feel right. And and I I would, I see an opportunity here to tighten things up and and. Have the town be a leader and lead by example rather than. Using an eight twenty four to ignore all the zoning laws.
That's not what that's for. It's not to ignore the zoning laws, we already by our own regulations ignore our zoning laws, we're not bound to them.
Yep.
And so what we did was we developed this project to serve a number of different facets, one is. The parking lot as it is now is a hazard to the employees of the board of education, that's the original request that they came to me with. This parking lot can only be cleared of snow and whatnot in the winter time, to a certain level, that is typical of a gravel parking lot. That's a hazard. The proper management of the bus fleet itself is another asset management thing that is very important to us, these are expensive items. We don't want them sliding around on the ice either, so. At the end of the day, in discussion with the board of ed's personnel about paving this as part of the Garfield uh, Millan Overway. It made sense to me to include it into the project, they're even willing to pony up the funds for it. So, once the decision was made to look at paving it. The decision now, my decision, was made to see how much of this area we can reduce, that's in the upwind review area. That was a result of the remediation efforts from DEP. So that's the quarter acre reduction we've achieved, we've also added the water quality device, which in my opinion is one of the best LID features. It is an 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 absolute known standard item for clearing the water before it goes into the brook. So I would argue against the perspective that we're not doing LID, we are, I would argue against the perception that we are. Not trying to achieve a minimum amount of uh, disturbance the upwind review area. Uh, we will, in fact, as a result of the question about planting grass. Plant it with metal mix instead, and when we get into ancient uh, communications, I have some pictures of how that came out over at. Uh, park where we cleared the trees for the the bridge project. Alright, so I think that we're trying as far as a a town. Project to be as employee compliant as we possibly can with a situation that we've already got, that none of us here had anything to do with. Alright, none of us are responsible for the remediation, we didn't create the problem, we didn't fix the problem. We have a situation now, and my attempt is to minimize our current impact to that problem. That's the best I can do for you, at the end of the day, that's all I can really do for you, we're not going to move the buses anytime soon. So, this is how we came up with a solution to try to fix that.
Well, the 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 whole bus placement thing that. Kind of, you know, as speaking as a resident and a taxpayer. It just seems like, you know, we've got poor project planning. Where we don't even know where we're going to put the buses in the future, so let's just pave this now. So it it just doesn't feel right. I I just, I'm going on intuition here, it doesn't feel right. Commissioner Bishan.
Uh, Chris, can I ask you if, so. This bus project, this this thing before us today, let's just say we we didn't approve it. It's not going to hold you up in any way on all the connectivity work and all that.
We will still, if if this, let's say this aspect doesn't get approved. We still have to do the road, we still have to do the bike lanes, we still have to do the pedestrian access, all of that will be paved.
I'm saying this doesn't impede you in any way, if this this.
Well, the other parts of it would, we have underground uh, conduits that we intend to put in there to move the security lighting.
That's all on the bus parking lot.
It's all on the bus parking lot, uh, so that part of it would be, because that part of it's paid for from the board of ed side. A question of whether or not that would go forward, now, this is the time to do that, because I'm not going to dig Garfield up. To put a conduit in if we decide two years from now to do this park parking lot. Uh, so this is also a matter of timing, we're going to do this Millan Overway once. This road isn't going to be milled and overweight again for twenty years, that's our current cycle, we do every road in town on a twenty year cycle. Five miles a year, you know, one point seven five million dollars. And that's our our asset management for road surfaces, so. Twenty years from now, you might come back to do Garfield Street again, but I won't be here.
I just would like to say that that the, that's anecdotal evidence of how much we're expanding this, because we're still talking about a point three five acre. Addition to the historic parking lot there, matter of fact, Crog has the shaded area of what's developed on that property and it. It shows it nowhere as near as bit as this, so that's going back to the historic uh, for fifty years, we had one row of buses. And I sent you an email with side by side of the two um, pictures, if you want to, maybe you could put that up, but before, if if you do. If you're willing to.
A part of that too is that building that came down was a fifteen bay garage.
But it was all one row, it was only one deep.
It was, but I'm I'm told it was deep enough to accommodate a long bus and a short bus.
No, no.
That's what I was told.
See the overhead pictures, it was buses parked next to the garage, can I just look at this map again for a second?
The one that's up now?
The one that's up now.
Yep.
This is the property line right here, right?
Well, property line's a moot point, because it's all town of Newington.
I know that, but but we went through this with the town hall, and they tried to put the town hall into Massacoli Way right away, and they got spanked for that.
By who?
What's that?
By who? I wasn't here for that, so.
And DC, uh, people had the uh, rightaways and and uh, and rights to that property. So it is, I don't think it's a moot point, because this is would be, again, expanding the parking lot. This is the property line right here, we're parking all these buses in the uh, Garfield Street right away, you know, to me, that just. That just makes the problem even worse, so.
It's outside of the travel.
Yes, of course, it's not in the road, but it's in the Garfield Street right away, we can't just move, I don't want to be party to this, you know, um. I said that you could park your buses in the in the uh, in the right away, so.
Uh, I actually can.
Separate property, even though they're town property, yeah.
I actually can give permission for that.
Well, you. Not without uh, uh, town uh, council approval on an eight twenty four, because that would be changing. The borders of the roadway and the parking lot, so that would be a, you know, absolutely would require an eight twenty four, specifically.
No, I don't think so.
I, you know, when I read the the wording, I think it is, do you have that picture?
Yeah, I can share it if if the chairman wants me to put it up.
Oh, throw it up, do I have to stop sharing?
Side by side of the bus parking, you know, before and after.
Do you need me to stop, Paul?
No, I'll just share over. It's very similar um, to what it's actually been.
But I think that's the, you know, I keep going back to that, why are we trying to make this uh, you know, different than it was for fifty or sixty years? So on the left is the historic. Uh, image where you had a single row of buses. They backed in from the road, just like they do in the garage across the street now. And on the right, you have what we what we're, what we've been doing, even though we're going to pull that back a little bit. Um, it's still talking about two rows of buses, so I know, um, Chris, you had mentioned to me, where am I going to put the small buses? This is way outside of our purview, but I'm looking at that OFI building right up the street, they got parking on all four sides of the building for those short buses. Just on, just throwing that out there.
I'm not even going to touch that.
Yeah, well, I'm just throwing it out there.
So what I see in this picture here is they were parking more buses in the other side of the brook, also in the upwind review area. Those yellow ones on the on the picture on the left side.
Still doing that, I think they pulled back a little bit there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they may have pulled back a little bit there, uh, but I'm talking about on this side of the brook, it was historically one row of buses, I don't know why we want to increase this. You know, bus parking area and, you know, not to mention the potential impact.
Well, from my perspective, we're decreasing it, so that's where we disagree.
Well, we have, well, we're talking about, well, if you could call that a decrease, looking at the picture on the right compared to the picture on the left, then. We'll have to disagree.
What I'm not disagreeing about is there is a difference between two thousand seventeen and today, I recognize that. What I'm dealing with now is what we have today, and that's what I am reducing.
But the decision to park those buses there, you know, to expand that parking, even, you know, just to utilize that space that was created from the cleanup. There's no doubt why, why it was, why the space was there.
Yep.
But that was not a decision for. The board of ed or a town manager or engineering, it wasn't anyone's decision to make, except for the town council, that is expansion of. Of a public way, specifically with the wording of that eight twenty fours, that's what I keep going back to, so.
Yep.
So they may choose that, they may love it, and they may decide to do it, I'm still not thrilled with it, but. Uh, I don't want to be a party to trying to overstep that and and. Through the guise of uh, we're reducing it especially, I can't call it we're reducing, we've increased it and uh, and it's pretty, pretty simple to see there. In my opinion, so, I'm not going to keep berating you on that, and I don't blame anyone here, everyone's new. You're new, Paul's new, um, our, even our, even the super is probably the, not the same one that was here at that time and uh. And the town manager, so everyone's new, so I'm not blaming anyone, but.
So, um, I'm going to jump in now with the uh, the the impervious. Surface that's proposed, you know, right now it's gravel, and I know it is hard packed. But I took a five gallon pail of water, went over there prior to this meeting, and I dumped it in the parking lot. And that water started to flow towards the catch basin, because it is. Grated towards the catch basin, but none of it ever reached the catch basin, everything got absorbed into the soil. Um, I kicked the soil afterwards and it definitely perked in, so, um, I know that that. Current parking lot is absorbing, um, my concern is putting down asphalt and increasing the volume of discharge into Mill Brook. Um, I would like, you know, the state to weigh in on increasing the the discharge. You know, into the into the brook. Um, so, you know, I I kind of feel like a third party review by the state i- is warranted.
What additional, what additional increase of?
You're going to have, you you've got. Stormwater, which is hitting the gravel, the dirt today and being absorbed into the soil. If you pave it, you're going to have an impervious surface, and that is going to be an increase in stormwater.
And it's going to do exactly what I've been saying, it's going to channel into the catch basins. And it's going through my hydrodynamic separator, which its purpose is to stop what you're asking. That device is there to separate grit and the oil from the water that goes.
But the volume of water is going to increase, that's my concern, especially after what's just happened in Texas.
Look at the report I left you.
I'm I'm concerned about the amount of water that the town is going to be discharging into Mill Brook.
Because of the decrease in the gravel area, we're showing a decrease in the flow, it's it's incremental, but it's still there. We're actually putting less water into the brook than we would be.
I I I hear you, but I find it hard to believe. Um, especially after witnessing, you know, the water go right into the soil when I poured it into that lot.
My problem with that is so is all the petroleum products that leak off those buses. All of that right now is going into that gravel, we paved that, it goes into the catch basins, goes through the hydroelectric separator. That's what it's for.
Mm-hmm. So that's one benefit, but I see the the downside as being the increase in in water volume going into Mill Brook.
So, that additional report, that additional report I left for you shows a decrease.
So, and as far as the safety, you know, concern here, um, walking in that parking lot. It it seemed perfectly level and graded, um. I would think that walking to a bus is probably the least dangerous thing that a bus driver is going to do, I think it'd be more dangerous going up. Down the stairs on the bus, um, driving the bus is probably the most dangerous thing they do, I think. Walking to the bus on a level surface is is not really that. Um, big of a concern as far as safety.
And yet that's what they led with.
Other duties as a bus driver are far more dangerous than walking to and from a vehicle.
I can see that point, but that's not what they led with when they approached me on this.
Just putting that out there, because it's just common sense. Yep, so, um, and my other concern is the lack of low impact development measures being used. Um, again, I I see this as a big heat island, um, I don't see anything being done to mitigate that. You know, I would like to see a net zero impact to the environment, but this proposal to me. Uh, is too impactful to the environment.
Chris, if you looked at that uh, last picture with the with the showed the bus garage, and you could kind of measure the length of a bus next to it and see that. It was only one bus deep.
It's what it looked like to me too, but it's not what board of ed told me.
They used to park a couple of vans in there, yeah, you could put two maybe short buses head to head or two vans, but not a bus and a short bus.
And Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to answer, typically the way the DEP ever gets involved in an application on wetlands is if a wetlands commission. Fails to act, the applicant petitions to the DEP, and then the DEP charges full to the town, the entirety of what it would cost. Um, to do the review from their administrative, so that's typically the only way a DEP, other than. Something that's a large wetland thing that requires Army Corps and reviews of that one, that's not what we're talking about here. Um, so again, what, looking at the DEP, the only way is for a failure route of the commission. And then for them to completely charge their hundred percent staff time and everything to the town, and that typically takes months. I have never actually seen it done.
For years, like you were talking about the other time, yeah.
The DEP is not typically fast to act, and from my talk recently with them, the people I've talked over the last year, they are severely understaffed.
So, you know, and again, I'm going to reiterate, you know, my fears were putting us in a compromising position, and, you know. People that have to work together, you know, becoming, you know, placed in a contentious environment, so. That that's my problem with this, um, being placed in that position. Commissioners, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Will that.
Is there any?
Use the mic. Bring it a little closer.
Yeah, is there any alternative place for it to park at all?
For the buses?
Yeah.
That's a policy decision that's above my pay grade. And I don't say that lightly, the town, as I understand it, has been discussing bus parking for years. And I don't see a solution to it anytime soon.
Have they ever thought about just parking the buses at the schools?
Again, that's a decision above my pay grade. And and again, I'm not saying that as a joke, I'm saying it because.
Well, I understand, I understand perfectly, I was just like, you know, I don't understand exactly why they have to be all mashed together.
Let's call it an inherited problem.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Strinsky has his hand raised.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Strinsky.
Hey, um, so, not sure if um, anyone here would have the answer for that, but is there almost like a statute of limitations for? Say you have impacts to a wetland, and it goes unnoticed for however many years, is there a timeframe that that can last? Or is at some point, is it kind of like, well, we missed the impacts, so. We can't do anything about it.
I believe there is, but I I think the important part there is, we haven't missed it. Um, there's not a person in this room who's not aware of it, so I would say that that doesn't apply just yet. Again, my opinion not as a lawyer.
Okay.
See what he means is what Paul, you alluded to, that if something.
So what I'm. What I'm, what I'm thinking is that we're, it seems like some of us are kind of. Looking at what impacts will it make? What are the changes to impacts with what is here presently, and what are the changes to impacts with what was there in twenty seventeen? And it feels like we're not on the same page there, um, so I'm wondering if there's, there's a way we can kind of. All get on the same page of what what do we think we should factor the impacts against?
Yeah, so I'd say from that would something that would have to be looked into, I can say from my past experience as a well and agent. And enforcement, it's typically when you see something, that's when it's acted upon. Um, I haven't seen any very specific statutes of limitations, zoning does have some. Regarding, yeah.
Six years.
Yeah, regarding location of a structure, um, from a zoning perspective, there is a clock, um, I have not seen one on wetlands, but, you know. Typically, wetlands, it wouldn't be, you know, this would be a case for the town would be enforcing against itself. Um.
Plus the fact that I'm on the record six years ago, ra-raising these same issues.
Yeah, it it was known and apparent, and, you know, and enforcement action with that, again, we can't. Chris and I can't speak towards the past, uh, we weren't here, we weren't staff members, uh, and nor. Are a lot of the people who were involved in the whole process, um, in the past on that one, so it really is, you know, it's a town facility. Um, the work was done, you know, with the consultation with the DEP to do the remediation. And then whatever follow through was a town process, and however it got left out, and I know that that concern about. It's an expansion from what might have, what was there previously, but. it's an expansion from what might have, what was there previously, but actions happened, a plan was undertaken, work was done. It was installed and it's been used that way for a significant period of time. So that's the whole trying to relitigate and go back. That would be the town enforcing against itself. Um, so and that's not a necessary, you know, that's not necessarily something that you see often. Um, normally if it's a town, you either take care of it, you work with it, you work with the town land, you accept the work that was done and you continue moving forward. So this application that's really in front of you, well, yes, I know you're looking at the past. The current application is for the paving and for pulling back from the current um, limits. And I know there's concern on the past. I absolutely get that. Uh, but it's not something, you know, we can easily speak to, uh, just because we weren't here throughout the entire process or any of the process.
Okay, no, thank you for answering that. I appreciate the uh, the insight. And that's like something that I think we need to kind of look at is is what we're dealing with now as opposed to what we were dealing with if we were trying to do the same thing, but it looked like twenty seventeen, if that makes sense.
You can close the door. No one's gonna be calling now.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have any visitors.
If you see anyone in the hallway and they look around, tell them where we are.
Thanks, Matt.
I just have a quick question. So basically for eight years, we've been parking these buses obviously further back than where we were here, trying to pull it back closer to the road.
Correct.
Which I think we all appreciate, which should be said, you know, it's appreciation of, hey, let's get these back to where we were. So it looks like what, maybe a ten to fifteen foot area of, you know, increased buffer. So now, like I said, we've done doing this for eight years. Are we gonna be potentially liable for any soil cleanup for the bus spills in those areas?
If we were to find an appreciable amount of contaminant, we absolutely would be. But it doesn't matter where the buses are parked for them. Right? So by putting the asphalt over it, if nothing else, we're capping it.
Yeah, you're capping the okay.
Thank you. I know how counterintuitive that is. You know, you'd say, okay, well, you want to try and and clean up the problem. Um, I can tell you from when we did test bits out there to determine if that material was supportive for sub base that uh, Jimmy Wells really had to work his excavator to dig three holes for me. Uh, so yes, the gravel will take water, but the gravel is also very, very hard. Uh, and it will definitely support the asphalt without any additional sub base. So there's, there's this whole intricate relationship of all of that material that's in the ground there. There's four feet of basically road base. That's how deep they excavated to remediate the problem. And that's typical for DEP remediations to go down four, four and a half feet.
They were even deeper than that.
They could have been. I understand from people who were here at the time that the hole was very substantial. Uh, there were jokes about maybe that's where they were moving the swimming pool. You know, I'm glad I wasn't here for that because that would have been hard to swallow, but that's another matter.
Just want to say though, just because material is hard does not mean that it doesn't absorb, because a brick will absorb an awful lot of water.
It's definitely permeable. I'm not saying it's not. Uh, I'm just saying that unfortunately permeable means it's permeable for all matter of materials, like the stuff that dripped off the buses.
Yeah, another question for that front row buses, and this is more on my professional side. Is MDC or CNG in that area? So I'm gonna tell you, if we have to respond to a leak and those buses are right there, it's not gonna be fun for us.
Well, if you don't have gas there.
Yes, there's no gas, but what about MDC?
We do have a sanitary sewer that runs through that. But the answer to that is we'll move the buses when they have to work on that pipe. They did have to relay that pipe when they did the remediation. So it's relatively new and I don't think they're gonna have a problem in my lifetime. That's towards the back of the parking lot. I think he's referring to the.
The front. Yeah, I just thought about this stuff that's kind of in the street right away where potentially we, CNG or MDC would have, you know, some of their service stuff.
Well, if it comes to that, we wake some bus drivers. I mean, it wouldn't be that big a deal to push them backwards. So it's, you know, that's just an operational matter. I don't think you have gas there.
I don't think we do either. I think, I don't even think we have it on Garfield.
I tend to think you're right there.
Uh, when we ended the neighborhoods.
When we did the survey work for it, we ran into water gates, but we didn't run into gas gates.
Because we feed the city stuff by uh, Cedar Street.
Cedar Street, yeah, the old line coming in from the old building.
Yeah.
The uh, the interesting thing is where some of the other water is, like amongst the the tree system that we talked about uh, last time, the white pines, the um, water surface that's in there for the park and the bus garage. For some reason, a bus garage is fed by a water tap that comes off of uh, a meter that's in the middle of those white pines. I don't know how that happens, but we know it's there because we dug that up last year. We broke our water main to the to the bus garage.
So I'm I'm kind of still stuck on, you know, the the state was involved in this remediation. I would like the state to weigh in on evaluating this um, paving project. Now, I I still have my concerns about the water volume, um, creating a uh, a heat island, uh, the lack of LID.
My only heartbreak with that is I don't think we're gonna get any traction from DEP on that.
I was just gonna say the best I could offer for tonight is to table it. So if you force me to vote, I'm I'm not, I'm not on board.
If we table it to August, I'm already into my construction period.
I know you said that. That's why I asked, uh, you know, that we don't, we're not trying to hold you up on this whole connectivity thing. We heard about the grants and all that, but or even to me, this is, uh, this shouldn't have been part of it, in my opinion. If you gotta run a conduit under the road for future use, potential use, then do it while you're doing your construction, but you know,
it's uh, you can make contact with DEP and see if they can weigh in. Um, and if not, maybe get another third party reviewer.
And then I can see your paving, you know, like I said, into that right away. I know Board of Ed is paying for it. I guess that's but the way you show where the paving or where the actual lot is gonna be, you're outside of the bounds of the property. You're not on town hall property anymore. You're in the Garfield Street right away. I know it's town in town, but we went through this with the town hall. There was a problem on the uh, southeast corner there.
Did uh, one of the commissioners online have a comment?
Yeah, um, so a a couple of things. Um, Chris, what would it take to add like a couple of, because you were mentioning like a wildfire remix? What if there were a couple of like bigger trees planted there instead? What would that take? Because that could kind of help mitigate any heat island issues, um, put some shade on there?
Uh, biggest concern about adding additional trees, um, mostly because we've taken a few of the trees that are there down in the last couple of years. Some of them are not well, so they were dropping branches on the buses. Um, now every time a bi- a branch drops on a bus, it's a several thousand dollar repair. So I'm not gonna go out of my way to volunteer planting trees over there that might potentially one day add more damage to these things. Um, I'm happy to add trees elsewhere in town property uh, as a compensation. But I really don't think I want to put them next to these buses. They're too valuable an asset.
Fair enough. Um, and in terms of the infiltration into the lot, um, with hard pack gravel like this, it it does infiltrate, but you need something a little more scientific than a jumping a five gallon bucket on it to kind of figure that out. If if we wanted to, I could, um, my office, I've used a couple of um, double ring infiltrometers before to test the rate at which water infiltrates. Um, I could see if I could borrow those, we could do an unofficial, see how much water actually gets in there kind of thing. Um, but typically what you're worried about with larger storm events is the initial rain, right? So you get like um, like half an inch of rain an hour or something like that. And it just doesn't infiltrate that quickly. And so most of that water ends up in the discharging into the river regardless, even if it does infiltrate that initial bit of rain. So I'm not overly concerned about the infiltration into the gravel. Um, I I'm personally much more concerned about, like Chris was saying about um, contaminants leaking from the buses into the ground.
Um, any other comments from commissioners? Alright, so my position is I still would like to have DEP weigh in on this or a third party reviewer. But I'll leave it up to commission. Do you want to take this to vote tonight or or to write till next month and who else has presented to us?
One suggestion.
Mr. Chad?
Um, maybe if we let it, uh, if we tabled it, it would give uh, them a chance to see if there's any option to get DEP involved or DEP with our just as just a little thought.
No, I I like that. I agree with that. So I'd be willing to table.
That's the best I can offer, so.
Commissioner is okay with tabling tonight?
I'm okay with tabling.
But letting it go forward. If we table it, we're just gonna mess up this production schedule. It's gonna wind up busing, parking the buses there forever.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear exactly what you said.
We're gonna park the buses there no matter what. Okay. This is just a question of whether we pave it up, right?
Correct.
I don't really see a big difference. I mean, the bus is an impervious thing anyway.
Alright, so.
And obviously they, there's no chance of moving those buses to anywhere else. This is it. The buses stay there. So I would say.
Well, we don't know that. See, that's that's part of the problem here is the planning of this, we don't know what they plan to do in the future with their buses. They don't know where they're gonna put them or how many they need. Um, they're looking at, I know that they're looking at other sites. Um, Alumni Road has been thrown out. There's a couple of opportunities over there. I know uh, other commissions are looking into it.
Can we ask our representative from the town, uh, town council to talk on this?
Commissioner Zell, it's like, it's been talked about. Nobody wants them where they are now, but there are no other alternatives, certainly.
But there were alternatives.
Well, no town hall, we would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't just be, we'll be up to another piece of town hall property. There's no town hall property. So they are gonna be there for a while, but nobody wants them to be there forever.
Yeah, so it to me, we're we're spending money on paving that, you know, we they're not gonna be there forever. Why, why, why spend the money? Why, as a, yeah, I'm just talking as a taxpayer and common sense, why spend on something you don't need? Or, you know, you don't even understand what what your needs are.
Sure, sure.
Are there more buses than there used to be?
Excuse me?
There are more buses than there used to be.
No.
Apparently, no?
No, my discussions with the Board of Ed is they've had forty to forty-five buses for the last thirty-five years.
So when there was just one row of buses, where did they put the rest of them?
I can't answer that. They say they've always parked them there.
Well, we see the aerials, so. Basically doubling.
I asked them if they parked at the high school at one point. They said they don't. I asked them if they had another parking facility someplace else. They said they didn't. I asked them if they had any in substantial increase in the number of buses in the last thirty-five years and they said they have not. They've always had this many uh, buses and that they were always parked in then one of the two buildings are out in the parking lot where they've got. I can't challenge that. I have no way to say that the Board of Ed is not telling me the truth. I wouldn't accuse them of that. So with that information that I've got, that these buses have always been there and that they're gonna likely always be there regardless of what people would like because of the lack of facility to take them to. Again, I'm back to the bottom line. I have a project. This is our one opportunity. This doesn't get approved. That's fine by me. We'll do the work we can do, the conduits, move the poles and things like that. But we're not coming back to this anytime soon. I'm not gonna come back and say in a year or so, now let's pave that parking lot. It's just not gonna happen. I mean, I have a say in what projects I do and I don't do. And this is the time to do it. If we don't do it now, that's fine. I'll do what I can. So it's now unfortunately an uncomfortable decision that you have to make. You can approve this project as it is. You can deny this project as it is. You can table this project as it is. But by next month, when you meet, it's too late. By next month at this time, that road is gonna start being filled. We're gonna start doing whatever amount of work I have permission to do. And that's where we stand. This is where we are tonight.
And I agree with you that DEP will never get around to this.
We'll never get an answer from DEP. I can't get them on the phone for more important issues than this. I honestly can't. Uh, I I have one resource that gets DEP to call me back.
Yeah.
Although if they want to issue me another notice of violation for not being compliant with the MS four, they'll show up.
I don't have any solution for this, but just on the matter of table. I don't see that. If we did that, we would be any other place other than we are right now.
Right, but I think so.
And the basic problem is, you know, if you're really paying attention to the legality of the project or, you know, I don't know that wetlands has anything to vote on yet because you know, it's not a project that we can vote on yet. That, you know, I I could be wrong about that, but uh, you know, it seems to be an insoluble problem.
Alright, so I I think the way to do this then is we'll ask the commission for a motion to table. We'll put it to a vote. And if the commission wants to table it, we wait till next month. Um, and hopefully some of the concerns will be addressed at the next meeting or uh, if we don't table it, uh, we'll then bring it to a vote this evening. So can I get a motion to table application?
Can I just ask Chris?
One more thing before we go to that. Uh, Chris, so if basically if you pulled back that
Yeah.
parking lot a little bit more, you wouldn't have to come before us to ask us for permission to do anything.
If I had the room to pull it back more, we wouldn't be here, but I don't have that.
Well, you always did, so that's what I'm saying. So historically, you'd still have a bigger parking lot than what was there with the same, if they're saying the same number of buses, but.
What I provided for the Board of Ed for their needs is what we I can't make that drive aisle shorter and still be able to maneuver those buses. That's what they asked for. Uh, so that again is what's driving that particular layout. This is what they said they needed and that's what we are trying to provide for that. Uh, so I I really don't have a solution.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Alright, so continuing then, can I get a motion to table IW twenty-five dash eleven?
I'll make the motion to table.
Motion from Commissioner Deschamps. Second on the motion?
We're not gonna get there with this.
Any second on the motion?
I will second the motion. This is Commissioner Conway.
Second, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm saying.
I got two extensions, one from Commissioner Womet, one from Commissioner Anderson. Uh, any no votes? So the ayes are one, two, three, four.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I might recommend just a uh, a roll call.
Okay, let's uh, Sue, are you on? Can you do a roll call vote for us on the motion?
Yes, no problem. Hold on just a second.
Um, could, this is Commissioner Strinsky. Could you explain the difference between an abstention here and a no vote?
Um, I can say from a staff point of view, an abstention is ultimately a no vote because it does not count it in the affirmative. So um, while not, a abstention and a no effectively means that there's not an approval vote. So an abstention, just to say someone abstaining for whatever reason um, on that, and then a no is a direct no and a yes is a direct yes. But if you abstain, it would not be counted as a yes. Okay, thank you.
Abstentions go with the majority. That's basically the rule.
That's what's been explained to us before with the uh, That's what's been explained to us before with the, uh, from the town attorney, former town attorney. So Sue, if you can go ahead with the, uh, the roll call.
Or Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, I'm gonna go no, I don't see where another month says.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bishan?
I say yes on the, on the, uh, extension.
Commissioner Conway?
Yes.
Table, the table, whatever, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Well, Morris is not seated this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Strinsky?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Seidel?
I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Womet?
No.
Chairman Zellig?
Uh, yes. Alright, so I have, uh, four no votes and three yes, so the motion to table fails. Uh, we'll move on then to, um, motion to approve the application. Do we have any conditions to the application?
I have no conditions.
Alright then, can I get a motion to approve I W dash twenty-five dash six?
Yes, I, I'll, I'll make that motion.
A motion from Commissioner Womet and second.
Second.
And second from Commissioner Anderson. Uh, Sue, can you do a roll call vote on, uh, the motion, please?
Yes, I will, uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishan?
No.
Commissioner Conway?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Strinsky?
And just to be sure, this is to approve the, uh, construction?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Seidel?
Am I yes?
Commissioner Womet?
Yes.
Chairman Zellig?
I'm gonna vote now.
Okay.
The motion passes, uh, with four affirmatives, so it has a majority, so the motion passes to approve.
We're wrong, Chris, you got it through.
It's not really a victory.
Well, I'm just saying, you were saying that you wouldn't get it, wasn't gonna go.
I'm gonna go back and say, hey, I don't like having it put in this position.
And I think on P twenty-four issue.
Alright.
I'm not gonna lose it, I can.
Alright, so we got through it, uh, let's move on then to, oh, congratulations. So let's move on.
Let's move to ten standard conditions.
Uh, public participation on non-agenda items. Any member of the public wishing to speak, come forward. No one in the room, anyone online?
No attendees online, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on, communications and reports, Town Council Liaison? Ten o'clock.
I think, but there's really something to address report, um, I think in the last meeting we talked about, um, the council tapped it, the thousand and thousand.
Texter, um, and it's primarily a tool used to attract development. And, um, we had no real policy in, in place. This, um, adoption basically, you know, told what type of, um, businesses or would be considered if there was a tax abatement, um, requested. And every town has it now, and it's almost expected. So it's, uh, was good to just kinda codify the fact that we do, we may or may not consider it. But it still will be based on an application, um, by application. And then the second is a steep grant, um, we, the town, um, was granted a steep grant for four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to, uh, for a new inclusive playground at Candlewood Park. So construction will be starting this summer. And that's it, and just, I don't know, I was just, if I can just say something about, um, the vote or, or the discussion tonight, you know. Given the parking situation at, if it'd make you feel any better, I mean, given the parking situation at Town Hall in general. I suspect that if the buses aren't being, gonna be parked, that parcel of land, they're not gonna build, you know, building or housing or whatever. If, I would, I would bet any money it would be grabbed for expansion of Town Hall parking or for Parks and Rec events, whatever. So eventually something, I mean, I'm just saying, don't feel too bad about. It, it wouldn't be turned into an ice and a little park or garden anyways, I, I can just see, cause there, you know, even that little triangle up at the end of Willard and, um, and Garfield, they're gonna be using that for parking. So at some point, one, and if the buses ever move, this would probably just be an expansion of Town Hall parking. So valiant effort, but you don't feel too bad.
That little triangle's part of the project too?
Exactly.
Yeah.
The connectivity part?
Uh, no, just part of a paving project, that, that little part that used to be where the road was, that's been kinda neglected. We included that in the overall Garfield project, one with the Town Hall parking lot and bus thing and the community not connectivity thing. The connectivity thing was probably the oldest of the projects that were bundled together to do this. And it's just a lot of stuff that's just.
But it's basically just gonna be a lined, uh, lane down the road, and it's not gonna be a sidewalk or any, people think there's gonna be a sidewalk.
There is gonna be a sidewalk.
Concrete sidewalk?
No, asphalt.
Okay.
Uh, the current idea is you do the five foot wide asphalt, uh, paths, A, they're easier for us to maintain. And B, we can snow pile them with a truck instead of a.
So there'd be a curb between the road and the, and the sidewalk?
So it's gonna come through, might even show in this slide that we were using. It doesn't quite make it, so the, so if you look in this image, maybe the next one will be better. It's not really. Alright, so you see where the entrance to that parking lot is, and either one of those views on the bottom left side. That little curve of asphalt there.
Hmm.
So the walk is gonna come in behind that or on the bottom part of the picture and connect over to the parking lot where that red brick is. See the red brick path to the little memorial, uh, that's over there?
Hmm.
So it'll come along from the sidewalk that's on Willard, come along the back of that parking lot and connect up between the red brick and the utility pole that's there. And then at that point, this is where the, uh, sidewalk becomes part of the roadway until it crosses again.
So it's just gonna connect to that parking lot basically?
Yes, and then from there, there'll be painted sidewalks to get over to Garfield Street where it'll connect ultimately all the way over to Main. Um.
But it will provide the connection to the existing, um, stairway that goes over right next to, um, Mill Pond Falls. So that extra parking lot by realigning it and just slightly fixing it and repaving it. Um, you know, we've seen that those spots next to the falls actually get pretty busy, those get used. Um, so this, uh, that, you know, was the opportunity to provide some additional parking or at least clean it up so it's officially a parking lot. And that way the people who can enjoy those spaces actually have a couple areas to park down there rather than, you know, circling up towards Town Hall and trying to figure something out.
So I kinda lost track, I think in the agenda, uh, we're at agent communications?
But that's not on our agenda. I, I see it on the screen, but we don't have it on our agenda.
Yeah, that's interesting. How did we do that?
Didn't go to the next page.
Yeah, well, Alan's not here for Pond Life, so we can just do agent or agent communication.
It's kinda too bad, because I have something to discuss on that. So in a roundabout, well, oh, alright, I might as well start from the top of my list. Uh, first on the agent communications is we have renewed the Cackawood membership. Alright, so this, uh, we, we are a municipal member again this year. Um, so the Green Lawn project that we were here last month, uh, is completed. So these slides show what the final product looks like. Where we had a sandbar in this brook before, we now have a clear channel. Uh, riprap on the area that was being eroded, and they did repairs to the storm drain. That outlet's there, you can't really see it, but it's tend to, I was trying to show it in this picture here. Uh, this area where the cursor is, is where the drainage on Green Lawn, and this is the east side of it. Green Lawn doesn't go all the way through, uh, outlets into the brook. Uh, so it, it came up fairly well for what it is.
That's actually open across that right away, right? It's, there's no, there's no conduit there, there's no road, but there's no, there's no conduit either, there's, it's open channel.
Correct, yeah, yes. Uh, and this timing couldn't have been better, this is right after the M D C finished relining the sewer. That runs right underneath that brook right there. So there's a sanitary sewer about twelve feet down that was leaking, uh, probably keeping the water level of the brook down.
Those people should be thrilled, cause they were losing a considerable amount of their front yard.
Yes, and the folks on the other side were gaining a considerable amount of, you know, garbage. Uh, so it, uh, it, uh, I think it came out pretty nice.
Um, it must have did it quick, cause I was visiting the site a couple times, and I think I was there as recently as last week, and I didn't see anything done, and.
They did it, they did it while I was away, I take a vacation and, you know, highways does their thing. And that's, uh, and that was in preparation for Green Lawn being repaved this year. Um, so the next thing on my list, this is, uh, this is, my slide's a little ahead of me. So the issue of the blue sheen on Mill Pond, um, in my discussions with people who know more about biology than me. Uh, the belief is that the sheen is likely the source of, or what is known as a biofilm. And it's the result of the accumulation in the bottom of the pond decomposing. And part of that process of decomposing is it gives off, uh, gases and other things that shows itself, uh, as a little bit of what people have been calling an oil sheen. So it's not an oil sheen, it's a biofilm. Uh, and the possible solution to this is that I need to look into when the pond was dredged last. And if it's time to do another dredging, and from what I've seen from the pedestrian bridges on the south end. It looks like the water is getting a little shallow, so a dredging project could be in our future. Uh, I don't expect that to be next year or possibly even the year after that. Uh, just because, because I have so many other backlog projects to get finished before I start taking on new things.
What's a rough dollar amount on that?
I don't even have a guess yet. Um, but when the time comes, we'll get into that. Obviously, I'd have to budget it, so I'd have to go through the whole budget process and all that sort of thing.
Um, why don't you get that picture of those trees, those bags, so this contain water?
Uh, yeah, that's a watering mechanism.
They're, they're bone dry and those trees are dead.
I was just there the other day, that's when I took these pictures.
Yep, so they're starting to come back, I did speak with, uh, Steve Tofelt, um, on that one. He also went on vacation for a week, and when he came back, you know, he addressed that, um, just to make sure that those were keeping planted. And kind of the issue there, of course, for planting trees too, is we can't dig deep. Um, just because that's an area where, you know, we're always concerned about the bedrock, especially for the actual dam itself, cause it's all one continuous dam. So that's the reason why they're kind of, um, planted as they are.
Yeah, and it wouldn't have been my first traceable location, but so be it. So anyway, those two, two of the four trees I promised are in that location, and we'll have to monitor their health. And if they don't make it, we'll put a new one someplace else. Uh, and then the larger picture on the right is the wildflower mix, is that what it's called, wildflower?
Hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the native wildflower.
Native wildflower, and you can see how it's taken fairly well. And this is that area where the trees came out in preparation for the bridge project. And I took a few more shots of that. Uh, so again, on the, uh, left-hand picture, it's pretty close to the same spot. And the right-hand picture is, I had gone down a little bit, turned around and took the photo facing the bridge. And another picture of the wildflower mix and a picture of some of our, my favorite residents of the pond.
The turtles?
The turtles. And so at one point in conversation with this commission, I don't remember when or what it was about, we had a discussion about some of the logs that are in the pond that we leave there on purpose, and this is one of the reasons for this, uh, there are turtles like them.
The big snappers are new too.
They probably sit up there to get away from this, not just.
I wouldn't blame them.
There used to be a boom across there, that's looking off the pedestrian bridge, right? The little bridge?
The little one, yeah.
Yeah.
And that boom is gone.
Yeah, I know that, so people were always complaining about all this garbage in the pond, I said, well, that's what I think the boom was for, to keep the floatables out, but.
It probably was, but it wasn't being maintained.
No.
Uh, and like anything else, if you don't take care of it, it, um, it doesn't help. So that, uh, that, I guess by the time they pulled the boom out, they couldn't even save it, it just went through the dumpster.
I think the columns are still there though.
It could be.
One of them fell in, I think one of them is still standing.
Yeah. Alright, so last bit of, um, agent communications, uh, did an agent approval at one oh nine Brookside for an above ground pool. Um, agent approval at one oh five Forest Drive for a generator on a surface mount. And and that's it, that's what I've got.
Alright, um, that looks like everything for communications and reports, uh, so good to adjourn that. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Commissioner Bishan, second from Commissioner Womet, all in favor, say aye.
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 Staying. Say no. Yes, good night.